Mrs. Young is under the weather and will not be here this evening. But I thank all the board members and staff who are here. Can I get a motion for certification of closed session?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg-James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ombi. Any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Can you take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. Thank you. Motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any discussion? Robinson?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to 4.01, the announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening begins with some of the best news of this year. Today, we welcomed back students in pre-K through fifth grade to classrooms for in-person learning. The transition comes as the number of COVID-19 cases and positivity rates locally continue to decline. Even with masks on their faces, you could see and feel our students and teachers' excitement as they reunited in person. There are strict mitigation practices in place, including social distancing and frequent hand washing. You might recall that responding to the local data, we accelerated plans for fourth and fifth graders to come to school a week earlier than initially planned. And as announced last week, the same is true for many of our middle and high school students. Here is the new timeline. In preparation for high school students' return, Jamestown, Lafayette, and War Hill are all hosting school walkthroughs for freshmen and new students. This is an opportunity for students to familiarize themselves with the building and learn the location of their classrooms. Schools are communicating dates and times directly with families. Speaking of high school students, dozens recently participated in the fifth annual WJCC Schools Science Fair. This year's fair was unique as the entire event happened virtually. A panel of researchers evaluated students' research questions, methodology, data collection, and virtual presentations. The overall winner is Tristan Grubbs, whose project was entitled "The Effect of Paper Towel Brand on How Much Water It Can Absorb." And that is certainly useful information for all of us. You can view the student projects on the WJCC YouTube page. Select winners, including Tristan, will participate in the Tidewater Regional Science Fair in March. This will be another virtual event. Congratulations to all of the students and staff involved in this year's event. Finally, I want to highlight an incredible partnership between WJCC Schools and the Williamsburg Regional Library. Thanks to the instructional technology team's efforts, our media specialists, and our partners at WRL, our students now have free access to Zora and every age-appropriate ebook the regional library purchases. This is a huge opportunity and resource for our students, and we are grateful for our partners and our staff for making this happen. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Ms. Ombi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two committee updates. I'll start with the Student Advisory Committee. Ms. Young and I attended last week virtually. Students were given information about the hybrid schedule and returning to school. Feedback was elicited on their thoughts on the hybrid schedule and the coming back and the timeline along the paths. There was some information asked of students who were current seniors in terms of graduation, recognizing that it's, even if it wasn't a COVID world, we don't have access to Kaplan like we have in the past because of construction. And so while no decisions have been made, staff are earnestly beginning work with regard to graduation and where it will be. And I think we'll get some more information about that tonight. I asked the students, I was wondering and recognizing that it's been such a challenging year with online learning, I asked the students if they could share with me any upsides to this year, and was pleased to hear most, all the students had a positive. And so just wanted to share those with the public and our board. One positive was teacher connections. And so while it's virtual and many people think that we're disconnected, students have found that it's actually easier to make those personal connections because they're emailing and texting and talking to their teachers differently than they would if they were in a classroom. And so they feel like that's something special and unique. Because it's been online and we've had a different kind of pacing, some students have been able to do self-pacing and learn time management skills. So many recognize that they're more organized now, and they weren't so much at the beginning of the year, but quickly learned that they needed to manage their time. And then have learned a lot with regard to communicating and using different technology tools. And so I asked if this is something that would carry on with them, and they all recognized that these were the upside and definitely were tools that they would take with them to their post-teaching experiences or to their next school grade. And I had planned to ask Ms. Young if I'd forgotten anything, but since she's not here, I believe I covered everything. It's always wonderful to hear students and to hear their perspectives. And then wanted to update on the Special Education Advisory Committee. I met with them last week virtually and then also met with their, they have a subcommittee on inclusion and was there with them the week before. And so again, their subcommittee continues to learn about inclusion. Information was provided from a recent JALARC study, which is the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. So that study, they focused on one specific piece of information, which was about inclusion and the recommendation that local school boards create a specific policy on how to include students with disabilities in the general curriculum. And they actually gave guidance for model language using Florida as a model. And so the committee was read through all that language. It was very aspirational, and they kind of pondered what that would look like for WJCC. They continued to grapple with wanting to pull together something that will be aspirational, something that will clearly define what inclusion looks like for this community. They're looking at data, teachers that were polled in WJCC over the last couple of years. And so they hope to be able to provide some language to us this June in their annual report. And we'll recommend that, and I touched base about the policy committee and kind of how things work. And so ideally, that information would funnel down to our policy committee. And then in the SEAC committee meeting last week, staff again spoke to the JALARC study, but more broadly talked about the different components of that study. And it was actually, so it's getting some local traction with the media, and it was on the news last night. Maybe TV 10 spoke about the JALARC study. And so within that study, it recommended that the State Board of Education provide a little bit more oversight with regard to transition, transitioning students not just out of high school, but within the different levels, from elementary to middle to high school, hiring special education teachers, inclusion, obviously, and then special education advisory. And so I think there's just going to be a bigger emphasis from the state level, providing additional support and oversight at the local level with regard to those pieces of special ed. And then lastly, there was a conversation about Disability Awareness Month, which SEAC had recommended be moved to March. And so there was a conversation about whether or not to shelve that, to change it, to alter it in response to COVID and the fact that we're not fully in class five days a week. But then the conversation went back to the fact February is African-American History Month, and even though students heretofore haven't been in class, if anyone looks at the website, you can see that each and every one of our buildings have been able to recognize and celebrate and remember African-Americans. And so we've done it virtually. And so certainly, that could be known with Disability Awareness Month, too, with a focus on educating students who are typically developing as opposed to educating parents about disabilities. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a little bit long.
Excellent. And I appreciate the work you're doing in those committees and those reports. And I appreciate the work those committees do, especially the special ed and student advisory. Great work. Any other board members? Okay, that moves us to 5.01, citizens' comments. We have, I believe it's 31 prerecorded comments tonight. We limited the time limit to a minute and a half. Obviously, I don't think everybody used all that, so. Off we go.
Hi, this is Robin Cornell. I'm a teacher at Jamestown High School, and I live in the Spring Hill neighborhood. I was just listening to the governor's conference on COVID and the return to school, and the recommendation was that all schools return to the classroom by March 15th. I hope that the school board will listen to that and delay the plan from the 22nd to the 15th of March so that teachers will have an opportunity to get vaccinated. If we all get vaccinated at the same time, get our second dose at the same time, there's a very strong possibility that there might be a very, very heavy number of absences due to varying reactions. Plus, waiting until March 15th allows us all to become fully immunized and provides a much safer environment. So please delay the opening from February 22 to March 15. Thank you. Bye.
Hello, my name is Laura Hannan Gardino. I am calling in to express my disappointment with the school district that more is not being done for the special education students. My son is a second grader at Norwich Elementary School, and he is not at all thriving with online learning. My older son is, but the truth of the matter is that special education students, especially students on the autism spectrum, especially students who have a lot of trouble with accessing technology, are really not learning. My son has only been given roughly two worksheets a day for the last year and has a 15-minute Zoom session. That is the extent of his education right now. This is unacceptable. This needs to be fixed right away. Thank you.
Tracy Corva, as a self-contained teacher, my students started in person in September and began virtual just before Christmas, and they've been struggling more and more the longer we are virtual. And I really feel that it's very important that they come back to person, back to in-person learning as soon as possible. And I also speak as a parent. My daughter is a junior this year, which is a critical year in terms of getting into a college of her choice. She's always been very happy and outgoing, has always loved school and gotten good grades since the closure. She has struggled personally, and her grades have dropped a lot. She gets way too much homework, so spends most of her time doing work, and she really needs to go back to in-person learning as well. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Byer. I have two kids that attend DJ Montague. I believe that the school should be open up five days a week now. I believe that while it's great that they're opening up two days a week, I think that there's no reason why, at the very least, you can't alternate every other Friday to where kids can go. One set of kids can go on Friday one week, and the following week, the other set of kids can go. I think you should, again, look to neighboring school districts and realize there are many of them that are going five days a week, and there are no reason, especially since teachers are getting vaccinated, that you can't bring the kids back full-time. Please listen to the people who are telling you that it's safe to bring them back, and please listen to the kids that are struggling virtually and look to them as reason to continue to push towards opening up full-time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Veronica Byer. I'm a student at DJ Montague. I think that we should all go back full-time, and we should go back every day. And I think that the kids should be learning more stuff, and the coronavirus, we don't have to wear masks.
Hi, my name is Christian Byer. I'm a student at DJ Montague, and I think that we should all go back five days a week because it's more fun, you get to see our friends, and we get to have fun on the playground, and we learn way more when we're in the school. And the online is boring.
My name is Yvonne Welch, and this is absurd that we cannot have parents at the football games in Williamsburg-James City County. First of all, it's not safe. The parents need to be there with their children. It's ridiculous that we're paying taxpayer money for a stadium that we cannot enter. And to say that I cannot be with my under-eight, under-10-year-old child is absolutely absurd and irresponsible, and I think we need to get some common sense in this matter. This is absolutely ridiculous.
Hi, yes, my name is Megan Welch. I'm calling regarding parents not being allowed to see their students play football in the War Hill Stadium. The stadium is not the school. It is outdoors, so social distancing can apply. We are loyal taxpayers and deserve to see our children play football to ensure their safety. I beg you to allow us parents to watch our children play football in the next upcoming game. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Frazier. I'm calling in regards to spectators being allowed to attend the War Hill or any football, excuse me, any football game within the Jame City County school district. I think we need to reevaluate that, maybe not all spectators, but at least immediate family members or something like that because these kids are working hard and do everything. Not to have someone sharing in the back, sharing in the stands for them is kind of, you know, not the best. And honestly, where, for War Hill, their games, their home games are on the Warner Stadium, which to my understanding I do pay taxes for. So I don't think that is fair that we're unable to watch the kids play as they are working hard through everything that's going on right now. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Kim Shadrick. I'm a Jame City County resident. I wanted to express my disappointment and concern with the decision of not allowing any spectators to attend the upcoming football games for War Hill High School that are in Jame City County and Williamsburg, particularly at the Warner Stadium. I mean, I don't even know how to express this in any words other than, this is ridiculous. We are able to go to York County and to Duquette County and to Iowa White games. Still limited capacity. I completely understand that. There's no reason why Williamsburg-James City County school system can't allow the parents to come and attend these football games that our kids have worked so hard to be involved with. These games are held outside. They're in a county-paid-for stadium that my tax dollars are going towards. There's no reason why... There's no reason why the parents cannot attend these games at the minimum, the parents. I don't think I have to tell anybody what the impact has of COVID on our kids with the isolation, the depression and the withdrawal. This football.
Hello, this message is for the James City School Board. It's in regards to not having spectators at the War Hill football game. My name is Ray G D from Toono, Virginia. I am occupation, a sports performance coach at the Division One collegiate level. And my concern is more about the nature of the sport, football being a contact collision sport and given COVID nineteen guidelines. I don't believe players at that level are practicing long enough to handle the, the nature of that sport within such a short time period. And my concern is that parents should be at their game just in case any one of our players go down due to injury, given the nature of the sport. So with that being said, I am asking the board to reconsider in having spectators there just from a injury safety precaution measure. Thank you.
My name is Steven Short. My son Lorenzo is a sophomore at War Hill High School and my daughter Lydia is a sixth grader at Toono Middle School. It has been proposed that students wear masks during practice and competition for sports unless there is a risk to student safety. I understand the recommendation for mask use when student athletes are grouped before practice, during team meetings, and when not actively engaging in workouts. I do not think it is proper for cross-country athletes to wear them during actual running. As an avid runner, I have found it impossible to wear a mask during training or racing and I participated in a number of races in two thousand twenty here in Virginia without wearing a mask. The vast majority of participants did not wear masks and to date I haven't met a single person who either has contracted the coronavirus at all or could attribute it a case to outdoor running in general in a race or a group. There are risks to wearing a mask during high-intensity exercise and competitive runners spend most of the practice and competition time in a high-intensity state unlike other sports with only short bursts of activity. Until more research is done to determine how to effectively filter a person's breathing without risks, runners should not be wearing masks during their routine practices. The runners will sweat heavily during even a short workout. For all these reasons, I strongly urge W J C C to change this policy and only require mask use for runners when they're not actively running. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristy O'Neil. I'm calling today to express my concerns in regards to spectators not being allowed at outdoor sporting events. For the governor, each player can have two guests and the capacity of the venue should not exceed thirty percent of its occupancy. A rental capacity is four thousand, so twelve hundred spectators should be able to attend events at this location. With runner being an outdoor venue, there's ample room for spectators to be safe, socially distanced and supportive of their athletes. I urge you to follow the guidance of the governor and allow spectators at outdoor sporting events. Thank you so much for your time.
Ella Baumgart, we are one of the who knows how many by now families that have switched to private school. We are about to take twenty thousand dollars out to pay for private school for next year. I really don't want to do that. Before COVID, W J C C offered a quality education to this community. We were pretty happy at our public school. But because of your decisions and even after Dr. Heron's comments at the last board meeting, I am still feeling a lack of confidence that you'll be providing the gold standard educational product come September, full-time, in person with a teacher. You are going to be held harmless with your funding, so maybe you don't want us families to even come back next year. From what I heard, you are planning your staffing in a way that none of us are coming back. And you would probably be right as long as you continue to offer a subpar hybrid educational product. You keep taking mitigation guidelines, especially social distancing, to their most extreme conservative interpretation to the point where you can't do your educational mission. We would love to come back to our public elementary school, but I just don't know if I can rescue letting this down again. Thank you.
My name is Lori Lee. I'm calling to address false claims that were made at the last board meeting. It was stated that winter athletes were quote connecting with each other and their coaches unquote. This is not true for the majority of student athletes. I'm a parent of a seventh and ninth grader, this is not true for them or for their peers. They have had absolutely no communication or connection with any coach, even though they all expressed interest in participating in winter sports. We can have varying opinions on what is safe, but it is unacceptable to mislead the board and the public as to what is actually happening with our students. I hope that these false statements were made because these individuals are woefully out of touch and misinformed and were not made to intentionally mislead. As for fall sports, including middle school students, to limit numbers for safety concerns does not make any sense since middle schoolers don't even interact with high schools, high schoolers. It was also stated that athletic practices would not be like club sports. W J C C should be learning from the club sports that have worked tirelessly, creatively and safely to serve kids with no outbreaks. Club sports of all kinds in this community have been a lifeline and filled the enormous gap left by W J C C. I've been an advocate and champion for W J C C schools for decades, so it is heartbreaking for me to see this school district's leadership lose the trust irrespective of its staff, students, parents.
Hello, school board. My name is T A E D. I'm new resident here and wanted to call and express some concern about not allowing parents to go to football games. Newly moved here as a new resident and my son playing a contact sport is not something that I would be in favor of. If there are any injuries or anything that jeopardizes him and I'm not there to respond, I would be of great, it would be of great concern to me. The stadium is pretty big and so I believe we could figure out a way to social distance, even if it's reducing the attendance to immediate family. I have a son that plays D one college ball and they're doing it successfully at that level. So I'm sure there are options. I'm happy to discuss this further. If there are any questions in accord to watching the school board meeting for response.
Yes, this is Mark Lane Hayes, senior. I'm calling in reference to my son playing football, which he's a junior, he has the same name. My complaint is there is no reason why the immediate parent or guardians of these children are not allowed to watch their, play their sports in the stadium at War Hill. One, it's not owned by the school. Two, we have to drive them there. Three, I can understand you not letting all the faculty, which is not part of the child's guardian or parents, or all the student body or the children from the school and everybody else to come in there and watch it. But there is no reason why the parents cannot come in that big stadium or stadiums where we play at vending and watch these games. You really don't have that right. That's my personal opinion, but I guess you think you do have that right to just tell everybody, parents and all, what they can do. But once again, strongly, strongly disagree with your opinion and what you're trying to do. Thank you. Bye.
Hello, this is Kimberly Hundley. I'm just calling to express my words of appreciation to the board members. And one quote from Dr. King says, and I quote, "And there comes a time when one must take a position that neither safe nor politic nor popular, but he must do it because his conscience tells him it is right." I would like to thank you for the challenging responsibility of ensuring that our students have access to high-quality education, which prepares them for life, and also thank you for supporting policy that affects the inside and outside of the classroom for teachers and staff. You are very appreciated.
Brittany Byer, I would like to see my kids in school five days a week. If you look around at districts very close to ours, they have figured out a way to do this. So I would implore our school board to take a look around, call these people that are on school boards in other districts and figure out what they're doing to get the kids in school five days a week. Williamsburg James City County School Board is a joke. Thanks so much.
Angela Olsen, it is absolutely absurd that our children cannot go back to school five days a week and you all need to rethink this and think it very hard and long. There are many schools that are doing it and it is ridiculous that James City County can't get it together. These kids need to be in school five days a week, back to normal and doing sports. You are absolutely killing this generation. Thank you.
Hi, this is Claudia Kessel. I am encouraged that students are beginning to go back to school on a hybrid schedule and I wanted to thank Dr. Heron for her direct email response to my question about the district's plans for next school year, referring specifically to the commitment to go back five days a week for in-person instruction for all students. However, later in the last school board meeting, I felt that that, the strength of that commitment was backed away from. And basically, what was said is that the intention was to go back full-time, but it depends on multiple factors. And this continues to make me nervous and still leaves me with a lot of uncertainty for next school year. As a parent of a child currently in private school and trying to determine whether he will return to W J C C next year or not, I need, I need some type of firm commitment and that, you know, not one or two weeks before the school year begins. So what I would like to hear from the school board is a strong commitment, ideally in writing, so that everyone receives it clearly, that the district will be open full-time for all students at the beginning of next school year, meaning no reverting to hybrid schedules or virtual instruction and no kids sitting in the classroom on their laptops.
Hello, my name is Kenneth White. My children attend Lafayette High School. I have a freshman daughter there and a senior son. Both kids play sports. My son currently is playing on the varsity football team and I have a concern with not being able to see his few games for his senior year. I don't quite understand why we're not following our governor's guidelines of thirty percent capacity. This is an outdoor stadium. Everybody can be required to wear a mask and follow all CDC guidelines. I don't understand why we're making it impossible for, for the taxpayers of this community to see their children play sports in an outdoor arena. Every one of you and every one of us have all go to the grocery store, we go to Lowe's, Home Depot, I work, you work, we take the actions necessary to protect ourselves and I don't see any difference with this. This needs to be revisited and I do believe that it's a huge concern for our entire community.
Hello, yes, my name is Marvin Ray Davis. My reason for calling is because I just heard that parents are not allowed at the football games at War Hill. Even though I understand the concerns of safety, but I do understand that we had a long period of time now when we knew this was coming and that these appropriate actions should have been taken and understand that, yes, this stadium is not on school grounds for one, and that we should understand that, that parents want to be there with their kids. Two, taxpayers pay for the stadium. Again, parents want to be there with their kids. Three, I definitely think that we should take precautions like maybe just only the parents and pause and let the parents be there for their kids. These are the things that make sense. College did it, professionals did it, why can't high schools do it? How can't high schools do it? In South Carolina right now, South Carolina was able to produce, have many games, even have a state playoff game and their parents were still there. Even if South Carolina do, I know Virginia is way better than South Carolina, you can do it too. That's all I'm saying. Please take my concerns and, and issues and, and collaborate on it and make a good decision. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Ellen Parr, teacher at Jamestown High School and president of Williamsburg James City Education Association. For my citizen comment today, I want to say thank you to Dr. Heron for the distribution of the first dose of the Moderna vaccine and for including a salary raise in your budget proposal. As we are in unprecedented times during the school year, I want to thank all the members of the school board for looking at the science, data and metrics when making each decision. Thank you for your dedicated time and role in W J C C.
Hi, my name is Jessica Dellenbach. I'm calling on behalf of my son, who's a freshman at War Hill and would like me to be able to watch his games. He is a minor child. The stadium is not inside, it is outside. He would like me to be there. I would like to be there for him. We are taxpayers, we pay for the stadium, they are our children, we have the right to watch them. Football is played outdoors, outdoors. Warner Stadium's capacity is at four thousand, but people standing. If you allow two guests per player, like the governor said, it's only two hundred parents or guardians or siblings, whatever, there's plenty of space, plenty of space for bands, there's plenty of space for cheerleaders, there's plenty of space in that stadium staying underneath the thirty percent capacity, staying within the rules. Please, please, please let us watch our kids, especially the senior parents.
Oh, yes, my name is Jody Holmes and I'm calling in regards to not being able to be a spectator at any sporting event, especially since our governor has approved that each player can have two guests or not exceed thirty percent. Warner Stadium seats four thousand. We have forty-seven football players, which technically means they can each have twenty-five players a piece, twenty-five guests a piece because thirty percent would be twelve hundred people. This is ridiculous that other counties around are able to be spectators. We are taxpayers, we pay for the stadium, it is not part of the school. We should be able to support our children, our children need to feel our presence there, our support there, especially with this pandemic. I think a reconsideration should be made, especially since the governor has spoken and has approved something that I don't think that you should be able not to follow.
My name is Nolan Klein. I am a sophomore at War Hill High School and I run for the cross-country team. I'm concerned that the new requirements to wear a mask while running is dangerous and harmful. As a team, we've been conditioning safely and we wear a mask when in large groups, but while we run, we are spaced out and follow COVID guidelines. I could go to my local gym and run without a mask inside, but I'm not allowed to run outside spaced out with my mask at the team. Running is a very strenuous exercise and I need my airflow to be unrestricted. Please reconsider the mandate that we have to wear the mask during physical activity that is spaced out because it's dangerous. Thank you.
Amy Coleman, you all need to open the schools full-time, five days a week. You need to start following the experts and the recommendations from so many of the leaders in healthcare and in this country rather than follow your own opinion. Each of you represent this community and I have yet to see where you put the kids first at all. No decisions you are making are student-centered. Thank goodness we have so many teachers and administrators that do put the kids first. Education is about teaching the children. Virtual is not working for so many kids. I commend you for allowing people that were on past to switch to virtual for the third quarter. However, these students are already being shorted so much instruction by removing Fridays as instruction days and having to be virtual in general is not conducive to a learning environment for so many students. And now, starting next week, all middle and high school students are going to be shorted even more time. Now, instead of having four full days of instruction virtual, which still isn't great, they're only going to have four half-days of instruction per week and you made eight full classes for high schoolers, so that on top of all of it. I don't, I'm not sure how you could even justify this. So many schools are back in-person full-time and those that are doing hybrid are even doing full days. The kids are already struggling, their GPAs are suffering, all at the hand of, of the superintendent and the school board. Y'all need to open the schools full-time, five days a week. It's time.
My name is Jennifer Taylor, calling in regards to being a parent of an athlete who is not able to be a spectator, even though the governor has said this is allowed. I think the parents of Williamsburg James City County Schools would appreciate if you all would take note of how Chesapeake superintendent has handled things. We as parents would really appreciate if you all would be somewhat considered as to make decisions that they have made. You are saying that we cannot go to an event that is not even on James City County property. It's the county's property. This is an It's the county's property, this is an outdoor event, there's plenty of space that people can be six feet apart. In my opinion, you all need to follow the governor's regulations, you all are not above the governor.
Renzo Short, hi, I am a sophomore at War Hill. I am a runner and I'm about to start cross-country season. When my coach told us that we would have to wear masks before we start running, but also during our workout, I was shocked. And very surprised to learn that other sports, specifically football, were not being held at the same standard. I think this is unacceptable to force a group of people doing high-intensity contactless exercise to wear a mask while working out, but not a sport that involves contact. Wearing a mask while exercising, specifically running, is dangerous. Running with a mask on can cause lack of oxygen and cause lung damage, and even fainting in severe cases. The World Health Organization specifically states that they do not think that athletes should work out with a mask on. Working out with a mask on can cause spit and saliva to be trapped in the mask. This causes viral particles to be trapped as well, and allows the wearer to ingest them. This also goes against the guidelines that the VHSL have put in place and opens up areas for liability suits. Other districts such as York County only require their athletes to wear masks while not actively working out, and I think this is a much better route to take. I think your reasoning for the rules is flawed, and I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for all the members of the public who called in. We appreciate the comments and very interested in what the public has to say. It takes us to six, six point zero one, the consent agenda. Consent agenda of six point zero one, approval of minutes from January nineteen twenty-one and February second twenty-one meetings. Six point zero two, resolution R seven dash twenty-one, school social work week, worker week. Six point zero three, resolution R eight twenty-one, national foreign language week. Six point zero four, approved release from compulsory attendance case number R twenty-one dash oh seven. And six point zero five, approval release from compulsory attendance case R da, R twenty-one dash oh eight. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, as written presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I apologize for not pointing this out earlier, I just actually noticed it on the minutes for January nineteenth and item number five, announcements and superintendent's report. My last name has an E, but, but the proper spelling is C O O K, not C O O K, so if that could be corrected, I'd be grateful. And I apologize for not pointing that out earlier.
Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Umby?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. That takes us to seven point zero one, superintendent's proposed operating budget for fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two presentation. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two school budget, because my wife may be an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. Mrs. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two school budget, because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we are delighted to present the superintendent's proposed budget, which supports approximately eleven thousand students, including pre-K, sixteen schools, and more than seventeen hundred employees. Our schools are an integral part of the city of Williamsburg and James City County, and we are fortunate to have the support of our community business leaders, families, and elected officials. The city of Williamsburg and James City County, our funding partners, have consistently invested in our schools, our teachers, and our students. Collectively, they fund sixty-four percent of our budget. WJCC schools only receives about twenty-seven percent of its funding from the state, plus nine percent in state sales tax earmarked for education. The federal funding provides less than half a percent of the WJCC schools' annual operating revenue. WJCC is a fully accredited school division, and the proposed budget will enable us to build upon that strong history of achievement. Fiscal year twenty-two proposed budget is aligned with the goals of the strategic plan Elevate Beyond Excellence. Key priorities include meeting the needs of all students with an emphasis on equity, safety and security, employee compensation, and most of all, important of all, teaching and learning. In addition, the proposed budget restores the majority of the positions and funding, about one point five million, eliminated from the budget last year based on the anticipated loss of revenue due to the pandemic. Our greatest resource in WJCC schools has been even more obvious in this last year during the pandemic, and that is our people. I am referring to the dedicated and innovative employees of WJCC schools. Going beyond excellence requires attracting and retaining great people, teachers, administrators, support employees, all of whom contribute to the positive environment that makes it possible for every student to learn. Therefore, this budget includes an investment of three point five million in our valued employees to move, move us closer to the regional market average in salaries. It sustains the one point five salary increase provided during this year and proposes a three percent pay raise in the next fiscal year. Quality teachers are in short supply, many have retired or resigned due to the pandemic. If we are to attract and retain the best employees from teachers to bus drivers, we must compensate our employees fairly and competitively. In teacher compensation with the one percent raise this year, WJCC schools is currently five out of nine in the region in entry-level teacher salaries for teachers with a bachelor's degree, and eight out of nine in entry-level teachers' salaries with a master's, sorry, with a master's degree. Today, we have fifteen instructional positions, twenty-four bus driver positions, and twenty other support positions posted and unfilled. That's why compensation is important. Budget also sustains our investment in quality health insurance for employees. Currently, twenty-seven percent of the operating budget is allocated to employee benefits, and more than eighteen million of that directly supports health insurance. For each full-time employee with a family who participates, WJC contributes over eighteen thousand dollars per year. WJCC schools incurred a six one point one percent increase in health insurance this year. Five percent of that will be passed on to employees. One point one percent of this increase will be absorbed by the school division. This budget proposal is informed by data that has been presented in budget work sessions in January. For example, staff presented comparative data on teacher-to-student ratios, teacher compensation, special education at English learner staffing ratios, and health benefits to highlight a few. Teaching and learning are at the heart of what we do. In support of goal one, the proposed budget includes over seven hundred thousand dollars to fund instructional initiatives and staff to support instruction. In support of goal two, this proposed budget also invests in educational equity, that is making sure every student has what he or she needs to succeed. Over one point six million is invested in this area, including seven additional staff and resources to address the growing needs of special education and English learner populations, staff to address the social and emotional needs of students, and a full-time equity coordinator. Also this year, the budget explicitly addresses the need for additional staffing and resources to meet the needs of economically disadvantaged students. Safety and security, our fourth goal, remain a priority for the school division, with an additional six hundred thousand invested in counselors, additional security officers, and technology security. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this truly is a budget of basic need. We know that with full funding, we will be able to meet the essential needs of our students and appropriately compensate our incredibly talented employees. Ms. Ewing, the chief financial officer, will now join me in presenting the superintendent's proposed budget this evening. If possible, I would like you to hold your questions until the end of the presentation so that we may lay out the plan in its entirety. Ms. Ewing, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. As you know, considerable work has gone into developing the superintendent's proposed budget. The fiscal year twenty-two plan is a balance of meeting established school board priorities related to the strategic plan Elevate Beyond Excellence, a review of available revenue, and meeting the division needs for the upcoming fiscal year. Throughout the budget process, school administration made decisions based on one overarching question, what is best for all students and staff. As you know, enrollment is a key component of the budget development process. Enrollment estimates drive our estimated revenue and our staffing model. This view provides a historical perspective with regard to enrollment within the division as of September thirtieth each year. Enrollment fluctuates daily, but September thirtieth is a benchmarking assessment for funding at the state level. We have seen a decline in enrollment this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and believe the most conservative approach for budgeting is to base it on the students that we currently have, instead of utilizing the future think enrollment projections. Our current year September thirtieth enrollment, or fall ADM, was ten thousand eight hundred fifty-eight, and that is what this budget proposal is built on. Although actual enrollment is down as compared to last school year, we need to remember that individual student needs are increasing. I would also like to mention that these enrollment numbers do not include preschool students, which total approximately three hundred and ninety-five each year. In addition to enrollment data, we use the strategic plan to guide the development of the budget to ensure that the goals align with the plan and that the budget supports the needs and goals of the school division, taking into consideration the input of our stakeholders. Here's a look at the current revenue projection. It is a little more than previously shared, as we are only budgeting for a five percent decline in state sales tax instead of a fifteen percent decline as compared to the most recent state estimates for next fiscal year. We are also not aware of any anticipated declines in lottery-funded state revenue that we were originally planning for. This change amounts to an increase of approximately one point seven million in state revenue. Again, I do want to remind you that we do not have a final state budget, so the state revenue amount could change. We are using the governor's proposed budget, including sales tax, to build our budget. As we begin to look at expenditure increases for next year's budget, the first area is restoration of items and positions that were reduced to balance the fiscal year twenty-one budget amid the COVID-19 pandemic. All of these items were part of our fiscal year twenty budget and are included in the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two. Here you will see the positions that we plan to restore. It should be noted that this is not all of the positions that were reduced. We reduced bus drivers by ten FTEs, elementary teacher assistants by seven FTEs, and central office support staff was reduced by two FTEs. The combined total for restoration of funding and positions is approximately one point five million. Here you see the proposed expenditures related to goal one of the strategic plan, academic achievement, college and career readiness. As shared at previous meetings, this includes staff and resources to support classroom learning, manage student data, and support our annual computer refresh. Goal two of the strategic plan focuses on equity. Expenditure increases here are primarily for personnel to support the division's growing English learner and special education populations. Data demonstrates a critical need in these areas. In addition, a position to support the division's strategic plan, as well as the Virginia Department of Education's vision for equity. As we previously shared with you, staffing will be done through a needs-based model utilizing a school's free and reduced lunch percentages to determine the class size. Here you will see the class size information for elementary schools. Like elementary schools, we propose a consideration of a school's free and reduced lunch percentage to establish the student-teacher ratio at each middle and high school as well. The differences between our free and reduced lunch rates are not as significant as the elementary schools. Therefore, you will notice there are three tiers and a difference in the ranges. Here you will see the class size information for middle schools. And finally, you will see the class size information here for high schools. We are also proposing a more needs-based funding at the secondary level by providing additional per pupil allocations to the schools. The current per pupil funding amount for middle schools is one hundred thirty-five dollars, and for high schools, it is two hundred dollars per pupil. We are proposing to increase these amounts by forty dollars for free and reduced lunch students at the secondary level. In the area of goal three, communication and engagement, contractual increases amount to approximately two thousand dollars. There's also approximately twenty-eight thousand included in the restoration of fiscal year twenty funding for customer service training that will be provided next year. Safety and security of students and staff remain a priority as seen in goal four. Budget proposal includes four additional school counselors as we begin the transition to a staffing ratio of two hundred fifty to one, which is the recommended staffing ratio of the National Association of School Counseling. Finally, under this goal, we've included two security officers for middle schools so that there will be a full-time person at each school. In order to attract and retain high-quality employees and remain competitive with neighboring divisions, the budget proposal includes an average three percent salary adjustment for eligible employees, as well as funding for an increase in substitute teacher pay. Based on the staffing ratios previously presented using an equity lens, you will see nine additional high school teachers. In addition, we have included two reserved teaching positions to bring our total to four. These positions are used to address staffing needs if enrollment varies from our projection, or to address special education staffing needs that may arise during the year. On this slide, you will also see a much-needed assistant principal for bright beginnings. Substitute pay is not generally adjusted annually with other pay scales. Pay for substitute teachers was last changed in the two thousand eight, two thousand nine school year. WJCC breaks down substitute teacher pay into those with at least sixty college credit hours and those with bachelor's degrees or higher. This chart compares WJCC with neighboring divisions. As you can see, we have the lowest pay in both categories, with degreed subs making eighty dollars per day and non-degreed subs making sixty-five dollars per day. We are recommending a flat rate for our substitute pay by paying all substitute teachers and nurses ninety dollars per day. We have very few non-degreed subs. Previously, we have shared an estimate of a five percent increase for our healthcare cost and employees absorbing that five percent. Our healthcare renewal actually came in at a six point one percent increase, so the additional increase of our five percent will be absorbed by the school division. That is the additional two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred seventy dollars for the additional one point one percent as indicated in this chart. At our last meeting, information was shared regarding spousal coverage and considering some of our neighboring school divisions. Taking the feedback from the board, we are recommending a twenty-five dollar increase for spousal coverage from an additional fifty dollars for spouse coverage to seventy-five dollars. If no employee changes their spousal coverage, we would see a reduction in our cost of approximately one hundred seventy-four thousand. If employees change from employee plus spouse to employee only, that would be a reduction in our cost of four thousand seven hundred sixteen annually for each spouse removed. Currently, WJCC pays on the employee's behalf twelve thousand five hundred fifty-two annually for employee plus spouse, while the division pays seven thousand eight hundred thirty-six annually for employee-only coverage. Moving on to budgetary expenditures related to Goal 6 of the strategic plan: organizational efficiency and effectiveness, you will see approximately $28,000 allocated for technology, software program increases, and a custodial FTE. Also in this area, you will see the cost for the placement of trailers at two schools, as well as increased funding for unemployment insurance and other contractual increases. On this slide, you will see savings from attrition totaling just over 849,000. This graphic outlines that our focus is right where it should be: instruction. This graph represents our expenditures by function, and instruction makes up 73% of the total. And as you can see by this graph, 87% of our operating expenditures are spent on people, wages, and fringe benefits. In summary, our revenue increase based on the governor's budget and a projected 1.5% increase from the localities is approximately 8.2 million. Expenditure increases after factoring in attrition savings of 849,000 also amount to approximately 8.2 million. So we are not proposing any additional funding requests to the localities to fund this budget plan. So where do we get the money in our operating fund? This graphic shows the breakdown of revenue received by funding source. In WJCC schools, the majority of our funding, 64%, is reliant on the support of the localities, the city of Williamsburg and James City County. This table showing a revenue comparison includes the school board-approved budget for fiscal year 21 in the far left column, or the pre-COVID-19 budget. Here you will see that prior to the pandemic, our total revenue, as reflected in the school board-approved budget, was 148.2 million. Based on the approved funding by the localities, our current year adopted budget is 140.7 million. The primary cause for the reduction is the 40% reduction budgeted by the localities in sales tax funding, and due to the uncertainty early on in the pandemic surrounding state lottery-funded revenue, we also budgeted for a 40% reduction in that funding as well. We are not currently seeing declines as high as 40% in either area, so the superintendent's proposed budget includes budgeting sales tax at a 5% reduction from the current state estimates, but no reduction in lottery-funded revenue. The proposed fiscal year 22 budget amounts to 148.9 million. Here you see all funds for our current budget, as well as the fiscal year 22 budget proposal. The total of all funds, including operating, grants, state-operated programs, and child nutrition services funds, amounts to a total of 166,102,820. Overall, there is an $8.2 million increase year to year for the operating fund, of which 6.7 million is supported by increased state revenue, and the remaining 1.5 million will become a request for funding from the localities. When you consider the mandated expenditures and those essential expenditures to support equity, safety, and much-deserved employee compensation, we believe this request is very reasonable. Our next steps in the budget development and approval process include a public hearing on Dr. Hearn's budget proposal on March 2nd. A joint meeting with our funding partners from the city and county is scheduled for March 12th. The board will discuss and approve a budget March 16th or March 23rd, so that the budget proposal can be delivered to the city and county by April 1st. This concludes our formal presentation of the superintendent's proposed fiscal year 22 budget plan. Dr. Hearn, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Well, thank you for the consideration of this budget this evening, and we believe it's a very fair and thoughtful budget to meet the needs of our students, and we look forward to your feedback this evening.
Comments from board members? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Hearn and your team, for all the work that you put into this. I had, I can't wait to dive in and study it, and I'm sure I'll have some more questions, but I wanted to make some comments. The first I'd like to point out is that you noted that 63% of our budget is covered by our local governments, which is really quite remarkable and something I think we should be grateful for. It certainly is different than a lot of school divisions, for whom the state covers a lot higher percentage. But I want to point out that in fiscal year 13, local revenue accounted for nearly 66%. So there's really been a drop locally in the last roughly decade, and so I just want us to be mindful. Even though it's really good, it's not as high of a percentage as it used to be, and it's been on a sort of steady and slow decline since then. I also want to thank you for taking a really hard look at the health benefits, and I support the kind of splitting a little bit of the cost, so that the school division absorbing that to protect our lowest-paid workers. But at some point in the next year, I would love to take a look at those positions again, because again, we are, benefits account for 70, sorry, benefits account for 27% of our budget, but in our neighboring districts, it's closer to sort of 24, 25%. So I just think we're an outlier there, and unless and until we address the salaries of our lower-paid workers, we're going to be unable to move the needle too much on that without harming those employees, which I do not, under any circumstance, want to do. So unless we're able to adjust their salaries over time, I think we're kind of stuck there, and that's unfortunate. And then I also, I see that you had, you're adding additional high school teachers plus reserve teachers, but not at the middle school or elementary school level? Is that correct?
There are no additions at elementary. The reserve teachers will be used wherever we need them with potential students coming back to our school division.
Okay, so those reserve teachers are not just targeted at high school? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that very much. And then my last comment or request, I guess, is I really would like to learn a little bit more about what you anticipate that equity coordinator position doing for the division. I'd like to understand that, not necessarily now, but at some point. I'd like a little bit more information on that, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Ollman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to say that overall, I support the budget, and I appreciate the fact that we're focusing on what I think is important. We're focusing on teacher and staff pay, and I appreciate the struggle with trying to bring some balance with the amount of money that we provide for health insurance. I'm glad that we were able to absorb that additional 1.1% and not pass that on to our employees. I do believe at the end of the day, we should continue to try to put more dollars in employees' pockets and work some more with balancing the cost of insurance. I'm excited about the focus on equity, and like Ms. Cook said, would like some information about what that's going to look like, but I'm particularly excited about the per pupil allocation. I think that we're moving in the right direction. I did have a question on the equity slide when we spoke to the additional two sped FTE positions. I know the federal regulations dictate how many sped teachers we have, so are these two additional on top of what's required? Are those two positions required?
I believe those two are based on the formula they're required next year.
Okay, so those, you have to have those, period, unlike the L positions, which we can't, we're not required by federal law.
That's correct.
So there's no getting out of that, and so appreciate the fact that there is a focus on equity. I think it's great that we looked at subpay, and I think it's a great idea to just have one flat rate. Appreciate all of staff's hard work in looking at the mental health of our students and security and safety. I think that's definitely where we need to focus, and so appreciate additional positions there. Thanks very much.
Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a few questions. The one right off the bat is probably the easiest one. I have the Bright Beginnings Assistant Principal at $100,000 for one FTE. Is that on par with what our K-5 are currently, assistant principals for K-5 are currently earning? Is that greater than, less than?
I believe so, Ms. Ewing.
It's on the average, and that does include benefits.
Right, okay, thank you. And that's one assistant principal, thus not being split between two individuals, I guess, then?
That's correct.
I really did appreciate seeing the 25 increase in the surcharge for the health benefit. I know that there had been discussion about there being a larger surcharge than that, but again, going back to where we are in this environment during the pandemic, folks, families, and students of our, I guess, children of our employees visiting doctors more than they have ever, I think that this is really a fair and responsible approach to an annual sort of incremental adjustment to that surcharge. So I do greatly appreciate that, and I think that our employees will recognize that we're looking out for them in that way, too. I wanted to ask, when I was looking at and listening to the 1.5% increase in local revenue, it brought back, I guess, memories, remembrances of conversations last year this time when we talked, or when it was explained to me, that there is a historic or historical trend of local revenue increasing from year to year. We could see that tracked across maybe 10 years. Maybe we don't have that available this evening, but it was something like, you know, up until James Blair was built, you know, that was the highest increase in local revenue, I think at like 10 or 15%. But prior to that, it never really rose above 3%. It was in that 1% to 2% to 3% range. We see 1.5% here, I believe. Is that right, 1.5% for this year? And that's also accounting for a 5% reduction in local sales, predicting, anticipating a 5% reduction in local sales. Can we, at some point, get an understanding of where we are tracking with that and what that compared to? Because it looks like we're above what we would have liked to see in our budget last year before we had to go back and amend it, above by about $900,000, which, on this side of things, without having really dove into it, dove, dived? I feel like it's dove. This looks like a very conservative approach to a budget going into this next year, especially looking at the ADM side of things. But I would still like to know, you know, how it fares and how it tracks with previous budgets that have been adopted and money's been released by our community, stakeholders, I guess, our funding partners, excuse me. I think that's all I had. I'm looking at my scratch here. Yeah. Thank you.
You'll get a chance to come back. Dr. Beers?
A number of things that I fully support and I want to recognize in this budget. I think it's very important to, that the budget reflects not just the current needs and the future needs, but also the needs that we've had in the past that we're trying to bring up, bring up to speed. I also recognize, and I think the budget recognizes, the impact of COVID-19, and somewhat related to that is I very much support, I still think we need more, but I very much support increasing the number of counselors that we have. I think, especially for this next year, they're going to be very much at work trying to help our students. I also see that and recognize that we continue to increase support for equity in education. I think it's especially significant that you have recognized the need and value of having a coordinator for equity in education, because I think we've needed that for quite some time, and I very much support that. I also think the issues about recognizing the need to remain competitive, or not just hiring new teachers, but retaining our qualified teachers as well. And I recognize and support all the time and effort related to the work and the research that the superintendent and staff have done. And as with Mr. Dowell, I agree that this is still a bare bones budget, but I think it's the right-sized budget for what we need to do this year.
Ms. Hummel?
Thank you, yeah, for putting all of this together, and I agree with all my other school board members. I just wanted to go back to the proposed elementary teacher staffing ratio slide, just for my own, so I understand it. It's the one that talks about the different class size targets?
Yes, I believe Mr. Walker should be available this evening, potentially, if we've got some questions specifically on staffing, but please go ahead.
Well, it might just be a general question.
Sure, absolutely.
It might not require Mr. Walker, but I, just so I understand, really, there's no difference in the free and reduced lunch percentage between 0 and 55 until you get, until you talk about the cap on the class size, correct? So the fact that there's a green blank there in the 40 to 55%?
It will not go above that number. That's correct.
So really, the cap is the 20 to 1, 23 to 1, 25 to 1?
Correct. So those in 0 through 40%, which is all of our schools right now, could actually go up to the cap for each grade level. Next year, when we implement these new ratios, then 40% will not go above the ratios that we have on the table.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of clarify that, because when it's just blank, it wasn't...
Thank you. Mr. Walker, I believe I heard you. Did you want to add anything today?
No, that's correct. Today's class size caps, where it's like grayed out, colored out, it's not applicable. The cap is actually the class size target column.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For being in the...
Oz, he's like the very wonderful, powerful Oz.
Up there above. And then, when I look at this budget, I mean, it's clear to me, when you're looking at the budget, that there should be somewhat of a comfort for our listening public that there's no budget for a virtual academy, there's no budget for some of the things that we're dealing with right now. We are building a budget that is assuming that we are all going back to school five days a week next year. Is that, I mean, that's the way I'm reading this budget.
That's correct.
Okay. I think there seems to be a lot of kind of worry or concern or whatever, but the idea is that we're not going to have a virtual academy next year, and we're going to have our students going back to school five days a week.
I think there will be an option for those families who want to have a virtual option, but there won't be a specific virtual academy like we have this year.
Okay. Could you explain that to me just a little more? Just, do you have any vision for that, like how that's going to look?
There are several ways in which a high school student, we actually, they exist right now. We have an internal virtual options, Virtual Virginia, internal courses, their learning lab. There's lots of different ways in which students are receiving some virtual instruction even before this year, and those will continue. And then there is conversations about a small, to be determined, virtual academy for those parents who still may wish to pursue that virtual option for their students.
Okay. And then will teachers in that be teaching in a hybrid? And then will teachers in that be teaching in a hybrid method or...?
Potentially, yes, at the middle school and high school. At the elementary, we are reviewing an option which would not be a local option, but a middle school and elementary option provided by Virtual Virginia, which would not be an internal option again. But again, it'd be for the small number of families who may want to pursue that next year.
Okay.
But it won't go away completely, because I think we've learned a lot, and some families and students have really done very well in that environment. So there will be an option for it. We're just not sure the extent or the numbers involved.
Okay. Because now we have like principals that we're paying for the...
Correct. We have a coordinator at both levels this year.
And, or is that not included in this budget?
It's not included in this budget. If it's funded next year, we will use CARES Act funding to, to support those positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, that question about summer school budget, I know that it's been restored. I'm wondering if that, I know how it, how it's been used in the past, if this potentially could provide opportunities for students who wanted to take an additional course or two during the summer because they weren't able to get it last year, or how are you, I really, I think a robust summer, especially this upcoming summer, and even the following summer, I think, would be really helpful in, in helping those students, I don't want to say get back on track, but, but have their, you know, the courses that they, that they want and need. Some of those might be available in the summer.
Yeah, Dr. Beers, we're actually setting aside a considerable amount of the CARES Act funding that we've just received to create a very robust summer school at all levels for the next three summers, because that's the timeline for using those funds. And so potentially, smaller classes, more direct teacher support at all levels to make students successful.
Yeah, I think, see, I think that's really important for the public to hear so that they, they realize that we're, we're, we're putting everything together so that students can get as much as they can, almost year round, if that becomes necessary, and they're motivated to do that. I just, I think it's, I think it's too important not to do that, and I just wanted that to be highlighted for people to...
Yes, sir. We'll have obviously students who need remediation, but we always have students in the summer who want to advance in their studies as well. So we actually give the opportunity to both students.
Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And appreciate Ms. Hummel bring us back to this screen, because it reminded me of a question that I got from a community member today, and it was around learning cottages at Stonehouse and James River that are set to go in. Is that right?
Upon budget approval, we will be adding learning cottages at both those schools to meet the current need. In fact, they will be at James River and Norge.
Norge.
And there was one added to Stonehouse this year.
That's right. Thank you, thank you. And can you help us understand how those learning cottages will be used? I don't want to assume that I understand. I think that I do, but yeah, if you could...
Yeah, basically, to get to the 19 to 1, we've, we've looked at the number of students in every grade level, number of teachers, and the additional classrooms will be used for a, a regular teacher with 19 students in that classroom.
That was my understanding. I appreciate that. There's been, I guess, rumor out there in the community that they're not for students, that they're for teachers to teach in that hybrid environment. And so I just appreciate getting that clarity out there for the public. So thank you.
Ms. Ollie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just following, I was talking back to what Dr. Beers questioned with regard to summer school, and then Dr. Heron, you're answering the question. So in the past, we have had students who wanted to advance. So is it my understanding that, given our COVID experience and the, and the ability to tap into CARES dollars, students who need remediation, as well as those who want to accelerate their studies, would, would be able to, we would use that funding? Where heretofore, students who wanted to advance had to pay for those classes in the summertime?
All of the details have not been worked out yet, but we still have some money in our operating budget for summer school, and potentially that could be for those wanting to accelerate. The CARES Act funding is focused more on remediation.
Okay.
And learning loss of students.
Thank you.
Any other board members have comments at this point? Couple of quick questions. So we have a 3% pay raise in this budget proposed. Do we have any vision on how much other, other school divisions are looking at?
It ranges from 3 to 5%, depending on the division. Not all divisions have actually put their budget out yet, but it does vary depending on the school division.
So it's a 3 to 5%? And so we're on the low, we're on the end of that, the lower end of that?
That's correct, sir. And we're also passing on some healthcare as well. So it's not really a, a true 3% raise.
Right. For the, for those who take the healthcare, it's not 3, okay. Enrollment, it's, I don't know what kind of, to Mrs. Hummel's point and her question, we are planning on going back to school five days a week next year. That's, that's our, our plan is business as usual come September or August, depending upon what, what we're sit, what we're seeing as far as this pandemic goes. But we're, we're, our expectation is that we are going to be in a position to go back five days.
All our planning is, is in that direction, right, I sir?
Right. So I'm hopeful that was helpful to the public to understand that we are, we intend to go back for full time next year, all grade levels, getting the first day of school. One of the things that Ms. Ewing talked about was the reductions that we made to balance the 2021 budget. I think, I think we also need to point out that we not only balanced it, but we gave $5 million back to the localities. The right number?
Approximately $5 million.
About $5 million. So, so we didn't, we didn't necessarily balance the budget. We reduced the budget so that we can, we could, so that we could give back those, those funds to the funding partners, just to make sure we understand that. The reserve teachers, as was talked about, that, that's earlier, that's going to be really challenging with our enrollment. I mean, I think our, I think our enrollment right now, I think the one we've predicted is kind of a, is kind of a floor or a basement, and I, I, I would anticipate that that's going to increase as we get, as we get to next year. And so that's just going to be interesting, how we, interesting, I say, how we manage that going forward. The spousal coverage, one of the things which I would like to see, I think it's, it's too late for this year, but one of the things I'd like to see going forward is that we eliminate the spousal coverage, but throw all the spouses off who can be covered at their own place of employment, and see what that does to the bids that we get for our health insurance. I think we might find that that, that the reduction that we get would might cover what the loss of income that we get from, loss of income we get from the spousal surcharge or whatever we want to call it. I just think that might, that would be more equitable to our lower paid employees to not have that quote unquote, "surcharge" tax, whatever you want to call it. But I think that's, I think that would just be more equitable, particularly to, I mean, we had to, we had to realize that there are employees that work for us solely for health insurance, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and, and I think we had to be sensitive that, to what that 75 bucks a year does to those lower, and how much of a higher percentage that is to those lower paid employees. So, so I think, I think that if, if you are covering, if you are covering a spouse who is eligible for coverage at their place of employment, I think that's what we need to kind of filter out versus the surcharge, if you will.
Totally agree.
So now, so for this, for this year, the, the surcharge goes, goes to all spouses? Like if you're, if you are a family with two kids and a, and a spouse, you still pay the surcharge, even though if we take that person out, there is no reduction in cost to the school system?
Yes, that is correct. Is it too late to, to look into that? Is it too late?
We've already gone to the market. And so in order to, we have to go back to the market in order to do all that. So, so I would say, yeah, it's probably, it's certainly too late for an April 1st budgeted, or whatever the calendar was, the March 31st budget adoption.
And we certainly, at this moment in time, Mr. Kelly, the 6.1% is not final yet. We are still in negotiation with our health insurance company.
Come on, Tim. I agree with Dr. Beers about the increase in counselors. We had that planned for last year pre-COVID. We thought that there was a significant need for counselors at that point. I still believe that there's a significant need, probably more significant than there was this year, this time last year. So I think that is, that is great. And I also like to, like to, we talked about the virtual academy and potentially having that as an option. There are some things that we did in this pandemic that I think are, are good to retain. One of those would be certainly being able to offer AP classes, having a teacher at one school, teaching kids at other schools that might not have a class that quote unquote makes. I think that's, that's, that's a good thing, and I think that would, you know, that might help reduce some staffing, but it's, I think that's, that's a, we need to not throw the lessons learned out from this pandemic that, that are, that are good for us. I think that's all I have. I appreciate the work that was put together, done to put this budget together, the conversations that, that we have had with, as a board, with staff, as staff went through their thought process and through their thinking and putting this, putting this budget together. We look forward to kind of digging into it and seeing, make sure we all understand it. So I know that's been a lot of work on, on your part, Dr. Heron, and also the staff. And so I just want to thank everybody for, for what the, what the work they've done. Any other comments from board members? Okay, so we'll look forward to further discussion on this going forward. Now that we got the hard one out of the way, we'll go 7.02, Return to Learn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever, our chief operating officer, is going to lead us off again on our Return to Learn presentation this evening, which will give some of our regular data updates as well as information on the progress of students at all levels. Mr. Keever? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school members, and Dr. Heron. This evening's presentation will provide the most recent Virginia Department of Health data and a comprehensive academic update on student progress for marking period two. On this particular slide, we are sharing with you our current dashboard that is available at WJCCschools.com, I believe is our org. I'm sorry, yes. It's important to note that over 1,500 members of our staff have received the first dose of vaccine. We are now reporting over 3,000 students on site for learning, and 1,700 staff members are on site working with us. Also note that the students positive and the staff in isolation numbers are down this week, with currently 18 staff members in quarantine status. I'd also like to just briefly note that we are looking forward to the second dose of vaccine for staff members beginning this Friday, with medicinal information going to those specific staff members, we hope, in the next day or so. Wanted to let the board know, as well as the general public know, that on Friday, February 12th, the Centers for Disease Control, the CDC, offered an operational strategy for K-12 schools through phased mitigation document. This recently released guidance document places an emphasis on helping school divisions return to in-person learning opportunities for students. However, it's important to note that the CDC guidance needs to be crosswalked with the January guidance shared by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Health. Further, the CDC guidance outlines three essential elements for safe K-12 in-person instruction, to include consistent implementation of layered mitigation strategies, understanding and review of community transmission, and phased mitigation and learning modes. Even more specifically, the new guidance states that schools and school divisions with in-person instruction should place, prioritize, should prioritize universal and correct use of masks and physical distancing of at least six feet, to even include the need for policy, structural, and operational changes in order to get this accomplished. The CDC guidance, in terms of the six feet of physical distancing, speaks to our planning and thinking around the hybrid schedule. Quite simply, to follow the mitigation guidance and six feet of physical distancing, we do not have the building capacity or space to accomplish this with all of our students on a daily basis. Another item of note in the recently released CDC guidance, and I think it's important to reference in light of the comments this evening and in recent weeks about athletics from the CDC, in-person instruction should be prioritized over extracurricular and school events to minimize the risk of transmission in schools and to protect in-person learning. Finally, it's important to mention that the CDC guidance brings different metrics to the forefront. While we have consistently talked about case incidence over 14 days and test positivity over 14 days, the guidance released on February 12th shifts to a seven-day window to look at prevalence of community transmission. And the transmission data has gone from five category levels, lowest, lower, moderate, high, and highest, to four category levels, low, moderate, substantial, and high. As we get more information from VDOE and VDH, we will likely need to revisit our decision-making data and metrics. While we appreciate the information, it will again offer school divisions some challenges in terms of meeting the community pressures and also following the mitigation strategies with fidelity. I say that to share with you that the information in front of you is the 14-day case burden information for James City County for today, as well as the 14-day percent positivity for today for James City County and the city of Williamsburg. We are pleased to see that the numbers continue to go down. Here's a 10-day look at the two previous core indicators for CDC, number of new cases and percent positivity for the two localities. You'll note that the number of new cases per 100,000 has seen a significant reduction of over 50% for James City County, pair with the reduction in percent positivity rate. On the 6th of February, the percent positivity for James City County was 10.1, and it has come down consistently since then. This is the data for today in terms of the eastern region, the metrics burden, the, it's a decreasing trend in terms of cases in the eastern region, and also a decreasing trend in terms of percent positivity for the eastern region. On this slide, we're sharing with you the 14-day case incident COVID map, which we have shared previously. You'll note some orange colors coming back onto the Commonwealth of Virginia. We'll also note on this particular map, which is the percent change in seven, seven-day case incidents, quite a few areas of green, which indicates that over the course of the last seven days, the case incidence has gone down in those particular communities. And then finally, again, here is a 14-day percent positivity map, which highlights decreases in percent positivity based on the colors going from red to orange to yellow to green. We continue to strive to build a culture of safety reinforced by the importance of everyone continuing to do their part to reduce the spread. Takes all of us to mask up, wash up, back up at least six feet, clean up, and speak up when necessary to help hold others accountable. As Dr. Heron shared with you a little bit earlier, and as we have shared with our community, the revised timeline now includes all grades pre-K through five and select special education students returning on the hybrid schedule as of today. Grade six and 12 will follow next week on February 22nd, and the remaining secondary grade levels are returning on Monday, March the 1st. Now, Mr. Walker will shall share specific data for marking period two. Now, Mr. Walker will share specific data for marking period 2.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. The next section of tonight's presentation is about student progress for marking period 2 and will encompass two main areas, student attendance and achievement. School staff monitor attendance for students present for synchronous instruction, completion of asynchronous work while learning remotely from home, and meaningful interactions between a staff member and the student. You can see from the data above that we are on target with a consistent attendance pattern as compared to last school year. The two bars on the left compare marking period 1, 2019, to marking period 1, 2020. And the last two bars on the right compare marking period 2 of 2019 to marking period 2, 2020. Using the platform Zoom, the chart on this slide documents our online engagement from September through the end of January with live synchronous instruction and professional collaboration meetings. This chart clearly indicates how our students have been learning remotely for the last several weeks. The month of January reveals over 200,000 Zoom meetings took place across our schools and division offices. Marking period 2 contained approximately 500,000 Zoom meetings. As would be expected, the online engagement for December and January aligns to the fact that our students were learning remotely. Next, we will take a look at elementary student data. This chart shows the fall PALS, the Phonological Awareness Literacy Screening Data, for all students in grades kindergarten through second grade. This year presented very unique circumstances assessing all students in grades K through 2. The assessment required students to be tested individually, in person, and the kindergarten students required two days of in-person individual testing. Our elementary schools scheduled individual appointments with families to test all students across the division. The blue color represents the 2019 percentage of grades K through 2 students who did not meet the expected benchmark. The orange color bands represent this school year's data from the fall, which in comparison is basically double the percentage of students not meeting the expected benchmarks for kindergarten, first, and second. Realizing the percentage of kindergarten to grade 2 students who are not meeting the fall benchmark for PALS testing, we felt it was important to gather a mid-year pulse check of student progress on specific skills, which would also provide an additional data point to assist with informing daily instruction. In order to balance assessment and instructional time, teachers were asked to only administer one task for every student in grades K through 2. Kindergarten and first grade students were administered the PALS blending task. Second grade students were administered the PALS spelling inventory task. All three grade levels saw positive gains for students on this mid-year pulse check. Established PALS benchmark is available to help gauge how first and second grade students are doing as a whole, but in contrast, PALS does not provide an identified mid-year benchmark for the kindergarten task. So we provided a comparison of the fall to the mid-year average score. This box plot data shows the kindergarten student growth from fall to mid-year. In light green, we see that the fall mean blending score was a 5 out of a max 20. And the blue color on the right shows the mid-year mean blending score almost doubling, as well as the range of scores growing considerably towards the expected benchmark. This data shows the first grade student growth for the mid-year pulse check. In blue, we see that 71% of students in the fall were achieving at or above the blending benchmark. And the orange color shows the mid-year gains reaching 83% of first graders at or above the blending benchmark. This data shows the second grade student growth for the mid-year pulse check. In blue, we see that 62% of students in the fall were achieving at or above the spelling benchmark. And the orange color shows the mid-year gains reaching 71% of second graders at or above the spelling benchmark. Next, we will look at the MAP data. MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. WJCC students in grades 3 through 8 took the math and reading MAP assessments during the fall of 2020. These assessments are computer adaptive and adjust to each student's learning level. As the student answers questions, the test responds by adjusting the level of difficulty. MAP growth is used to measure a student's performance level at different times of the school year, to also monitor academic growth, and to inform targeted instruction. Again, this data is from the fall testing window. The following is a comparison of the mean student performance, showing a comparison of WJCC elementary schools against the state. I believe we have at the top 2019 data, and at the bottom, we have 2020 data. There are 56 other Virginia school divisions who are also using MAP performance assessments. State and local data reveals minimal loss in reading. WJCC students will take the spring MAP assessment in early April. The 2019 and the 2020 WJCC elementary data show elementary reading performance higher than the state means for grades 3, grade 4, and grade 5. Very similar to the state data, WJCC showed a minimal drop from the previous year, and actually a slight gain noted in third grade reading. In 2019 and 2020, WJCC grade 3 and grade 4 students outperformed the state mean performance, comprised of those 56 other Virginia school divisions. Similar to the state, WJCC showed a very minimal drop from the previous year. Additionally, you may notice that grade 5 math performance is just barely behind the state mean performance. Each year, we have approximately 75 to 100 identified gifted grade 5 students who are actually enrolled in grade 6 math and instructed by their school's gifted resource teacher. Those MAP math scores are extracted and actually reported with the grade 6 middle school math data. Marking period 2 ended January 29th. Report cards were distributed through ParentView electronically on February 10th. We can see back in marking period 1 for the school year, we had 116 students or 3.9% with a failing grade on their report card. Marking period 2 had an increase of up to 191 students, translates to 6.4% with a failing grade on their report card. This data does include the Virtual Academy. In response to providing virtual remote instruction and addressing the literacy learning loss, our curriculum content coordinators and specialists have provided targeted small group lessons for teachers that are specifically designed for virtual instruction in supporting phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, and comprehension. Our elementary teachers do an excellent job providing differentiated small group literacy instruction based on students' needs. Each elementary school also maintains an internal data collection system to visually track and monitor students' academic progress. Schools maintain a student-centered focus during regularly scheduled planning sessions with their grade-level peers, in-house specialists, and administrators striving to meet all students' needs and providing supports where needed. This graphic represents additional literacy support within our elementary schools. Beyond tier 1 core instruction provided by the classroom teacher for all students, elementary schools utilize additional support positions to work with identified students. If you go to the outer ring, you will see that all schools have a reading specialist who works with teachers and identified small groups of students. All schools have at least one student support teacher, providing small group instruction for identified students. All schools have at least one reading recovery teacher. And the seven Title I schools also have part-time Title I tutors to provide additional support for identified students. Each school develops their own master schedule and determines when best to utilize these additional support personnel to support identified students with additional targeted instruction. Each elementary school also benefits from having a full-time math coach who supports teachers' instructional needs and also works with small groups of identified students. That concludes the elementary updates for marking period 2. And next, Dr. Worley will share middle school and high school data with you, unless you have specific questions regarding the elementary section of tonight's presentation. And I'm happy to answer those.
Ms. Ollie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Walker, regarding students with identified disabilities in the pre-K through 5th grade level, so students who have IEPs or 504s who are, would be typically in a classroom with their typically developing peers, they take these same assessments?
Yes, they do. Now, some of those decisions are IEP-based. That's a team decision.
Right. And so then for the students who don't take those assessments, maybe students who are in self-contained classrooms, how have we measured?
Those would be measured through students' individual IEP, student goals, and objectives.
So do we, do we have a sense of how those students are doing? I know one of our callers tonight spoke to the fact that her student, who was on the spectrum, has struggled significantly. So do we have a sense, like we have a clear sense of where our typically developing students or in terms of loss and what they've gained in the second marking period? Do we have that same information, or can you share that information at some point later on with the board with regard to our?
I could try to extrapolate the students with disabilities information on the report cards. Their data was also included on the report card piece. I can look to try to see if we can extrapolate that also from MAP.
It would be great to know how our most struggling students are doing. Thanks.
We can certainly do that, and also we can bring information to the board about what we're doing specifically to assist special education students in this environment as well.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question goes back to the number of students that did opt into the year-long Virtual Academy, and it's not just, I guess, an elementary question, but just division-wide. I think that was somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 students. Is that right?
Initially, yes.
First round. Do we have numbers for that second round of students that were allowed to go 100% virtual?
At the elementary level, we have about 1,100 students currently in the Virtual Academy, and we started out with roughly 1,300, about 200 have returned on-site for PALS.
Gotcha. And what about those students, I'm assuming that there were students that said, yes, I would like to stay virtual when you made that offer to families?
Yes. So currently, at the secondary level, we have around 1,300 students still in the Virtual Academy, middle and high. And then we had just right at 1,000 families request to remain virtual for the third nine weeks, knowing that they'll have the option to opt in again the fourth nine weeks.
Thank you. And then on slide 20, grades for elementary school students, and it shows these percentages between 2020 and 2021 marking periods. Is there any way to know how those compare to this time last year, marking periods 1 and 2 of 2020, 2021?
Well, this, I do have marking period 1 for you. It was about 1% of students with a failing grade last year at this time. But we felt like at this point in time, we were moving through this current school year and trying to show you marking period 1 and marking period 2 of 2021. But we can pull that in if you want marking period 2.
I would, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
We can get that comparative information for the board.
Thank you.
Dr. Beers.
Yeah, a couple of things. Blending scores, kindergarten? Oh, I'm sorry, kindergarten. I have a, I have a couple of questions. One of them is, well, I, I don't know, I'm not going to get into the sub-tests there, but I'm just curious. Of all the kindergarten kids who were tested, how many were actually reading by the end of the kindergarten year? Can you get a number on that? I'd like to know that.
From the 2019, '20 year?
Actually, actually reading by the end of kindergarten.
From 2019, '20?
Right. And I probably, and I guess, I think it would be good to know how many first graders were actually reading by the end of first grade, having looked at that blending score. Another question I have, and I don't want to get too technical here, but I'm curious why, I'm looking at all of these results, middle school reading, middle school math, the elementary. Why, why do you think the proportion by grade, I'm sorry, by grade who are passing? Why does that pattern, why do you think that pattern is so consistent across all of the grades? Do you understand what I mean? Go back to middle school reading. Pull up the middle school.
The elementary school reading, elementary math?
Yeah, I'll show you what I mean.
Is that what you're?
We haven't covered, we haven't covered the middle school yet.
Sorry?
We haven't covered the middle school yet.
Closer?
No, we haven't covered the middle school yet, is what Julie was saying.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. It could be the elementary, it could be middle, it could even be high school, because what I realize is the relationships across those, whatever grades are, that relationship seems to be consistent across all subject areas and all grade levels. For example, put up the middle school reading MAP data, you know, that, that.
The elementary map.
Put that, put that up.
Yeah.
I think it's slide 18.
That's fine. That's good.
Okay.
Look, now, look at the elementary. Now, put up the middle school, now, see the, I'm looking at the relationship between the purple, what is that?
All it orange.
Burnt umber and, I don't know, violet, whatever that other color is. If you go, if you go all the way, if you go up and down, the relationships seem almost identical. Now, go to the middle school reading slide.
Elementary. Yeah, go back one more.
That's elementary. Go to the, yeah, that's okay. Same thing. Same thing. Now, those are scores, right? Those aren't kids. Those are actual scores. It's like, why, why don't the kids in grade 5? Or, I'm sorry, why aren't the kids in grade 3 doing as well in reading as the kids in grade 5? Or is it a different score?
Well, it's the mean performance for that entire grade level across the division.
Right. But I mean, the max score for the, for the MAP, is it the same max score for each grade?
So.
Let's say, let's say, in third grade, it's 200. That's the highest score. And fourth grade, is it going to be 200?
So, for example, you could have, MAP RIT scores remain stable across grade levels and a subject area. For example, if we had a grade 4 student take the reading MAP assessment and a grade 8 student take the reading assessment, those RIT scores are stable. So if both of those students came out with the same RIT score, that's indicative of those students' performance. The scale doesn't change as we go up to middle school.
Okay, so that's what I, so that's constant.
Correct.
Right, that's what I wanted to, just for people to understand that. That's constant. But the numbers change, and the third graders don't seem to do as well as the fifth graders. But I'm not sure that's exactly true, but it looks like that, doesn't it?
Yeah, just a bit.
But it's not, is it? How can you, how can we, how can we reduce that confusion for board members, but also for, for parents to realize that? Because when you look at that slide, it does look like the fifth graders are doing quite a bit better than the third graders on whatever test they were given.
I would take it back to the, I would take it back to the general public and just stating that our. that our, all of our grade three, grade four, and grade five students in WJCC are outperforming the state.
Right, I don't know what that means. Just because they're outperforming the state, you know, it's, when I'm looking at that, even if they're outperforming the state, why are the fifth graders getting higher scores than the third graders?
Well, for the majority of those third grade students, I will say, that's the first time they're taking this MAP assessment.
Do you understand what I'm, what I'm getting at here is, there's, there's, they're bits of really important information that if you're not aware of it, it can give, it gives a picture that's not, I think, as accurate as it, as it probably needs to be, and that's why I'm serious about that. I don't mean to be facetious, but when I say, I want to know how many kindergarten kids are actually reading by the end of kindergarten? Sure, I want to know how they did on those little subtests, you know, the blending and the analytic and, and the, in the name, letter identification, all that kind of stuff. But I really also want to know, how many kids at the end of kindergarten this year, out of the total number, how many were actually reading? And I'm sure, it wouldn't take very long for you, for the teachers to come up with that number pretty quick.
We definitely would be able to.
I think that, because, you know, this whole thing about, well, these are the blendings, this is letter identification, this is whatever it might be. Parents want to know, how's my kid doing as a reader? And to say, well, he did really well on the blending test, as a parent, I don't even, you know, I may, I happen to know what that means, but, but a lot of parents don't, and I just think, and I know we're going that way in terms of assessment, but I think the, what's really important is not to lose sight of what, what you're really trying to do. You're really trying to create independent, effective and efficient readers, you know, by the time they finish up elementary school. And I know about, and I know the tests, and I know assessment's important, and I know the skill work is important, but I just think that those are, those would be really, those would be not just interesting numbers. I think if I'm a parent and I have a kindergarten kid, and I know my, you know, and I figured out, and I know my kindergarten has really started to read, let's see how, you know, let's see how that compares. So, it's, I don't want to say it's more subjective, because it certainly isn't. It's a different, we're looking at a different variable than simply blending or letter identification. Because the other thing that we know, you can do pretty well on all of those subtests, and at the end of kindergarten, you're not really a reader yet, because there's so much focus on that in kindergarten. And, and, and I know, I know why. It's because PALS is a test that's used all around the state, and everybody uses PALS to compare everybody else.
The preferred factors.
And so, I, I know, I've already, I've spoken way too much, but I just think, that's a, it's really, it is, it's not that I, I don't think the important, the data's important, I think it is important. I think, as, as any kind of data, we have to know where it comes from, what it means, what it doesn't mean, and how does it fit into the whole gestalt or the whole notion of what it is to become an effective reader, if we're talking about reading, or, or to be really good in math, or science, whatever it might be. But we're, you know, where we are now, it is, it is still reading, writing, and math, isn't it? Those are really the key areas in, in those primary grades. And as one of my science educator friends told me, yeah, but you got to have something to write about and read about, that's where the science comes in, and he's absolutely, he's absolutely right. You don't just write writing stuff and read reading stuff. You read social studies, you read science, you do all those things. So, I just, you know, okay, I'll stop now, but I would, I'd like to, I would like to see that.
Okay.
Any comments?
I think I've taken notes and tried to capture all of that.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about the PALS test for students at risk for reading failure. I appreciate your sharing that the percentage of students at risk has doubled, and that's alarming, but we, I'm curious if you could give us the raw number, because we lost nearly an elementary school full of students. So, the, even if everybody performed exactly the same way, the percentage would have risen, you know what I'm saying? So, of that number, so.
The percentage is indicative of the number of students for that year.
Right, but, so, what's the raw number compared to year to year? You know what I'm saying? Because it's going to be a higher percentage.
You would like the raw number plus the percentage? Is that what you're asking me for?
Correct. Right, because even if the same exact number of students formed poorly, the percentage would go up, essentially because we lost a lot of students, so the denominator's changing. So, the percentage is helpful and alarming, but I would like to know the raw number.
Or the first slide on the PALS.
Sorry?
The first slide on the PALS.
Correct, please.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Wouldn't change, wouldn't change if you lost them across the whole population? You lost an equal number of kids of the whole population, the number wouldn't change.
Right, but I'm, I am suspecting that we did not.
Right, right, right.
So, that's why I'm asking that question.
And that data does reflect last spring and taken at the beginning of this year, and we're starting to get some of that learning back, obviously, with some of the other data points that were presented.
Right, thank, I just wanted to, the raw number will be helpful, because I think when we're talking about kids, individual kids. That was all I have for now. Thank you.
So, the question I had along, it's on that same slide, so if we could just pop it back one, so those, I'm sorry, maybe another one, where we had the, where we had the.
Doubling.
PALS for grade level, kindergarten, first and second, we're getting there. There we go. So, these are, these are both given in the fall, fall of 2019, the fall of 2020. So, do we attribute the difference to the lack of school in the spring? Is why it doubled from one fall to the next fall? Because theoretically, the fall 2020 is pretty much before a lot of instruction happens in 2020, right? So, are we attributing that, that delta to the summer slide as well as not having last March, April, and May and June?
I think, I think it could be a couple of things there. I think that's definitely impacting it. My guess would also be that typically during a normal school year at the start in the fall, teachers have their students for about four weeks.
Okay.
Getting accustomed to school, routines, classroom, instruction, all of that, and then they begin the PALS assessment in kindergarten, first and second. I think there are a couple of different variables probably coming into play here.
So, in the fall 2020, we brought kids into an unfamiliar environment, sat them down, gave them a test, and.
Yes, sir.
We didn't have four weeks to try to break the rust and restart.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
And it wasn't even administered by the regular teacher that the student had started to form a relationship with.
Okay.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, wasn't also, wasn't the elementary grades, I don't know, K3, 4, wasn't that the largest percentage of kids who weren't coming to school? In other words, who were, if any, as a group, more of them did the virtual rather than, or was it the other way around?
I think, I think this was for all kids, virtual and non-virtual.
Yeah.
Includes all.
Were more of them out of school than in school?
In fall in 2020, everybody was virtual. When this was given in September, everybody was virtual.
Right. I'm just saying, given the nature of the test and, and the grades of the kids, while, you know, while it's of some concern, it's not indicative of what they.
Right, and just as a, as a general rule for me, I don't necessarily like comparing our students to the state average, because my presumption is that we're going to be above the state average. I like to compare us to us, and I want to see the number run the state averages to make sure that we are above the state average.
And I guess the other thing is.
But the presumption would be that we are above, so that's just my expectation. All right, Dr. Beers, do you have, were you?
Well, and, I mean, again, what is it that, determine that somebody is at risk for reading failure? What's the criteria? Below a certain score?
Based on the scores from those various subtasks, the subcomponents within the overall sum score of the PALS assessment, certain benchmark, the student is deemed as being at risk.
Okay. Now that we're, now that we're through the first five grades, can we go to the next?
Dr. Worley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. I will now share information on the progress of our middle and high school students. Similar to elementary schools, our middle schools did participate in the MAP reading and math assessments. This slide compares WJCC performance compared to the state in 2019 and 2020. Middle school reading data shows WJCC grades six, seven, and eight students outperformed the state mean average in 2019 and also in 2020. Additionally, the data reveals no significant loss between 2019 and 2020 results. The majority of students did test remotely this year on the MAP assessments monitored electronically by staff. Similar to the reading MAP data, we did see a strong math performance with our middle school students, as evident in our MAP data for both the fall and winter in 2019 and 2020. We currently have 2,541 students attending our middle schools and 3,654 students attending our high schools, and this includes the virtual academy and our past students. We recently had almost 1,000 requests for current past students to remain remote through the third nine weeks across middle and high school. These students will have the option to return to in-person for the final nine weeks or remain remote. The next few slides will show a snapshot of our academic data for the second marking period, as well as information on our continued support and intervention opportunities for The current slide shows the number of students with failing grades in middle school representative of all courses, including electives for the second nine weeks of middle school. 190 middle school students have 1F. This breaks down to 66 graders, 63 seventh graders, and 67 eighth graders. 857 middle school students have two or more Fs, and this breaks down to 197 sixth graders, 249 seventh graders, and 411 eighth graders. The next slide shows our academic highlights from the second nine weeks for our middle school students, and during the second night week grading period, 1,328 students out of 2,541 have all As, Bs, and Cs. And from this group, 941 have all As and Bs, and 432 have all As. Took a deeper look at high school by analyzing core data in isolation for the second nine weeks to take an intensive look at most of the courses having a direct impact on graduation. This slide shows the number of high school students with failing grades in core courses. For this purpose, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies are considered core content areas. However, it's important to note that there are some elective courses within those content areas. For the second nine weeks in high school for core classes, we see 308 high school students with 1F, which breaks down to 85 ninth graders, 81 10th graders, 76 11th graders, and 66 12th graders. We also see 759 students with two or more Fs, and this breaks down to 269th graders, 212 10th graders, 181 11th graders, and 106 12th graders. The final academic slide shows highlights from our current second nine-week high school data. As of the end of the second nine weeks, 2,114 students have all As and Bs, As, Bs, and Cs, and of the 2,114, 1,530 have all As and Bs, and 669 have all As. Our teachers and leaders are committed to giving students access to resources for mediation and extra help to support and provide intervention. We have a variety of interventions in place for our students across our secondary schools. These are currently ongoing and will move into the second nine weeks. I will highlight a few of those for you this evening. The first are our boot camps. Our secondary schools offer boot camps with online modules aligned with courses that allow students to show mastery of specific skills and recover failing grades. Our content coordinators create this each nine weeks to support teachers as they offer intervention. We also provide other opportunities to improve grades. Students can work with their teacher to make up work, improve grades, and submit late work through each marking period. We also provide many opportunities for remediation and tutoring. Teachers give extra assistance as needed or by request, and teachers also facilitate remediation opportunities with groups of students throughout the year. Students have the opportunity to also seek assistance from teachers on Fridays or after school. We also have a focus on SOL recovery at the high school level. Our high school students must earn verified credits through passing SOL tests or by successfully completing a state-designated alternative assessment. School teams work year-round to provide tutoring, intervention, and targeted remediation for students eligible to retest. We also have students focusing on credit recovery and GED. Our student advancement coaches in each high school work with at-risk students and serve as a resource as they monitor progress and student needs. They work with students to recover credits by participating in asynchronous credit recovery courses during the school year. Additionally, we have several students participating in our non-traditional site, the Learning Lab. Students complete online courses with a WJCC teacher serving as a mentor and tutor. So, let's now take a look at the impact of these resources and programs that we've used so far. Reflecting on the work done to date throughout the first nine weeks, if you look at our boot camps at the high school level, the initial focus was for seniors at first, preparing for graduation. We are continuing the boot camps now, and we're continuing the recovery for marking period one as well as marking period two. To date, at the high school level, 193 marking period one Fs were recovered as a result of boot camp participation. At the middle school level, the schools used a blend of the boot camps with the modules and other remediation sessions as boot camps to master content, make up work, and improve grades. And so far, 361 students have participated in 21 boot camps and recovered 326 failing grades from the first nine weeks. The number of recovered Fs throughout our boot camps will only continue to grow as schools are in different phases of, of offering in-person and remote opportunities for boot camp. With the transition to in-person learning for many students, teachers will have the opportunity to engage students with the modules that have not participated as of yet. With the opportunity to improve grades, in addition to the recovered Fs from our boot camps, at least 65 grade request changes were submitted at the high school level to date to make grade improvements for students with a D or higher in class. With our SOL recovery, through our fall and winter SOL recovery efforts, students have earned 192 verified credits across all three high schools. Students earned these credits by passing an SOL test, earning an L of AC on a, for an SOL test, or by passing a substitute test, like the work keys, in place of the writing SOL. We also have students participating in credit recovery, GED, and our non-traditional opportunities in the Learning Lab. Currently, we have 26 students participating in credit recovery courses in our schools, and four credits have been recovered so far. During the second nine weeks, the Learning Lab served 48 students who earned 75 credits. 32 students are now graduates, for a total of 44 for the semester. We also work with students in our GED program, and so far for the 2020-21 school year, we have 34 students in the program with seven graduates. As you can see, our students are making progress in catching up and improving their grades. This will continue for marking period one and marking period two. Now, Dr. Maiene, the principal at Lafayette High School, will share more detailed examples of the work our high schools do to facilitate success for all students, including efforts to get students through graduation.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, Mr. Chair, and members of the school board. Dr. Worley noted many interventions that we're using at the secondary level. I'd like to share some of the details that go into the implementation of those interventions. And it is important to note that we know these interventions are not finite, that we continue to address the individual needs of each student and of each situation, and that this work is ongoing. As I speak about our experiences at Lafayette, which are similar to those at the other two high schools. high schools, our goal is to continue to develop these interventions to support our students. The heart of our work is the impact of relationships and meeting the basic needs of our students, from providing food, clothing, and personal hygiene items, to technology, to an opportunity for our students to have a voice in our decisions to maintain our school, climate, culture, and pride. For example, our student advancement coach, Mr. Jefferson, has worked with our attendance associate, Mrs. Engstrom, our registrar, Ms. Jones, and our social worker, Ms. Finley, to check in on our students at their homes. To date, Mr. Jefferson has driven over 1,000 miles in WJCC just to deliver items to our students at Lafayette. In addition to food and school supplies, we've delivered over 40 MiFi's to homes, as well as Mr. Jefferson delivered 40 donated winter coats within our community this past month. Mrs. Nash, our senior administrator, called over 100 families to ensure they had WJCC-issued laptops. At the same time, our school counselors, assistant principals, and special education teachers communicate daily with a wide variety of student groups to ensure we're meeting their academic and emotional needs. Our media center specialists have created a RAM Nation landing page in Canvas so students can find academic resources, information from their class sponsors, and updates about clubs and organizations, creating a one-stop shop for Lafayette student information. At each school, the leadership teams meet multiple times per week to ensure their focus is on our students' needs, to address those requirements for students through freshmen with a focus on the goal of on-time graduation, to review any changes in assessments issued by the Virginia Department of Education, and review the list of students in need of most support. At Lafayette, that list consists of 44 students in grades nine through 11, and our senior graduation watch list started at 61 students in August, which we have managed to drop to 20 after the recent SOL testing window in January. And when we cannot locate a student, we exhaust available resources such as working with our social worker and the division interpreter. To date, there are only two students of our approximately 1,140 students that have not accessed our schoolwork in the past few weeks. Academically, we continually advise the teachers to be consistent across their courses, to accept any and all work within reason, to consider a variety of assessment options within the framework of the curriculum and course guidelines, and to seek out guidance from administration when encountering unique situations. Our school improvement specialist, Mrs. Townsend, organizes and maintains records about in-person and online boot camps. Teacher-created SOL review modules and in-person review sessions, lunch-bunch tutoring offered by our honor society students, and division-created modules to remediate grades for students that have earned an F during a marking period. In September, Mrs. Townsend and our counseling team have made hundreds of phone calls, oftentimes just to provide a word of encouragement. At the high school level, the understanding amongst the faculty and staff is that nothing is final. We will continue to be flexible within reason and err on the side of our students' best interests. While we're making every attempt to utilize all available resources and develop new ones, we knew last March that these efforts would be ever-evolving and essential for student success. And through our experience at Lafayette and from ongoing conversations with my colleagues at Warhill and Jamestown, one theme has become apparent. The strength of the community will prevail as long as we keep our focus clear. Warhill, Jamestown, and Lafayette administration, faculty, and staff continue to evaluate and adjust plans based on many of the aforementioned factors. At Lafayette, our mission is to support every RAM every day, and it is this focus that keeps us on task and forward-thinking in an effort to support all faculty, staff, students, and families.
Thank you, Dr. Maiene. Across our division, we are very excited to welcome our students back to in-person learning on our hybrid schedule. This is monumental, as this will only enhance the efforts and opportunities to provide academic support and intervention, like some of the ideas you've heard shared from Dr. Maiene this evening. We'll have the opportunity to reconnect with some students and connect our students with our school communities and extended activities. Our students are the heartbeat of our work, and their success and well-being is our priority. This is a journey, and we know we still have work to do. We will get there with the dedication of our exceptional teachers and staff. Mr. Chair, that concludes our marking period two update for this evening. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Ms. Zellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to, I believe it's slide 30, the highlights for high school, it would be useful for me to know, like compared to marking period last year, where there's like significantly more As, like is the breakdown still the same?
Sure. I wrote that down when you requested for elementary so we can get the comparison for first and second nine weeks last year as well.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to say thank you to all of our staff, not just at the secondary level, but elementary too, for going above and beyond it, recognizing that we're not just meeting academic needs, but it is at social, emotional, and providing a lot of basic needs for our families and students. And so I want the broader community to know that it's not just about reading, writing, and arithmetic, not in the pandemic. So thank you for going above and beyond, and thank you to Mr. Jefferson.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what strikes me about the presentation about middle and high schools, particularly high school, is the switch to year-long classes, even though that wasn't without consternation and hand wringing. It certainly wasn't easy, particularly when our counselors had to do schedules twice. You know, I was struck by Dr. Worley and Dr. Maiene talking about sort of looking forward. And if we had been in semester classes, it would have been a wrap, right? Like there would be not no quarter three and quarter four to recover and to continue forward progress. So I just want to say that I think that that, particularly for a pandemic year, that was a smart move, and it allows the time that these students need to come back to school and to continue that forward progress, to continue their learning. That's a good, a good thing, and just what struck me in this, listening to all of you. But, Mr. Chair, I do have questions not directly related to this presentation, so I don't know whether I should hold, has to do with extracurriculars and graduation and New Horizons, so should I hold that to the end?
Yeah, just hold that for a bit until we get through the presentation, unless there's someone?
This is just, well, first of all, thank you so much. I love hearing the details of what our employees are doing to help kids. I know Mr. Jefferson, I know the staff at Lafayette, and it is that personal outreach, it's the getting in a car and driving to someone's house, it's giving them the materials that they need, and developing those relationships with the kids to try to, like one kid at a time, to get them through some of these hurdles. So I just want to say how much I appreciate our, these like kind of behind-the-scenes people that are working their tails off to ease some of these kids through these hard times. So I just wanted to appreciate that. I also would like all of the charts to like include a comparison to last year, because to me, it doesn't help me to, like, kind of without that kind of a judgment of like, how are we doing, how are we stacking up, knowing we're in a pandemic, but like just kind of giving us that comparison is really helpful.
Maybe we have more straight As, we don't know, right?
Yeah. And then just a general question, when someone fails a core class and it's not remediated or recovered, can they not graduate?
They have to meet a specific amount of requirements for graduation, and there are specific courses that you do have to pass. That's why we implement a lot of different resources, including credit recovery, where students are in, at the school, they'll retake a course in a different format, usually online with someone, with the student advancement coach, working with them.
Okay, and so you're trying to do that on a, you know, just-in-time sort of?
We monitor all along. We have cohort lists from ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, and the work, we talked a lot about seniors, but we monitor who's behind in credits and try to work out through their schedule, or summer school, or when they get to junior, senior, we end up doing some of the credit recovery courses.
And does that fall primarily to their counselor? Or is that, you know, like, is the counselor and the counseling staff involved in that?
It's a, the counselors are involved, but it's a team effort, and, you know, Dr. Maiene might be able to speak to Lafayette, but I know every high school has a team, and we have a watch list for every Gary level. Principals sit down with that team, usually every other week, at least once a month, they're identifying who is at risk, what do they need, just examples, like you heard tonight about going down to the detail, that's how we track the students, to see what they need.
And then if all else fails, and at the end, you've got, you know, I don't know, 15 kids, that, do you, is that summer school? Is it repeating a grade? What do we do at the end?
It depends. Summer school definitely is always an option as well, depends on their grade level. We could have them potentially retake the courses if that's what's necessary to get that intense remediation next school year. We work with Dr. Nave at the Flex Lab to see if we can recover courses out there because they're shorter classes to finish the credits. It all depends on each situation, but as Dr. Worley noted, we have teams, most of the high schools, the teams on a minimum are the administrators, the school improvement specialist, the lead counselor, the athletic director will come in as well, we have the student advancement coach, and we all sit down and try to figure out what's the best path for each student. And then, yes, there are certain benchmarks when we're halfway through the year that we look at, how low are their grades, is it recoverable, should we switch them to credit recovery right away, whether they get additional support? Those are the decisions we make daily, and I would say now those decisions probably are more accelerated than normal, because we know that what happened last spring, we were able to get permission from the state to work through into September. And so we're really trying to forethink how we can address all those issues again, and then get with summer school where we had the last year, the opportunity to recover courses, and also take traditional summer school are things that are on the table again in our conversations.
Thank you.
Mr. Dell?
My questions were just answered, thank you.
That was quick. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I noticed that for the elementary schools and the middle schools on this presentation, total number of students are identified, but when we get to the high school, they're not. I'd like to know what the total number of high school students were, are, because they're not listed there. And I also would like to know, I can extrapolate from the rest of that, but once again, looking at the support, and I think, Dr. Worley, you did mention this, but I wasn't able to write it down quickly, with boot camps, 326, and I believe you gave the number of the total number that were in boot camps? Yes, sir. And those are the ones who recovered or improved? Do you have those numbers for the rest of that information?
So I think-
Can you get, I don't, you know, if you don't have them now, I get that.
So the first question there, 3,654 high school students?
Right.
I think that's on slide-
We're in, okay.
Slide 26.
Right.
And for the boot camps, at the high school level, we recovered 326 Fs.
Right, I got that.
Okay.
I just didn't have the total number.
Oh, the total number of boot camps?
Right, no, it wasn't down, it wasn't here, and the total number of high school students wasn't listed in that.
Okay, I can get that for you.
This earlier, I missed it, did I miss that?
Yeah, it was earlier in this slide, in this-
I saw high school, there it is, middle school, 2,541 students, and then I go down.
At the middle school level, I did tell you 361 students and 21 boot camps, because theirs was more, they started doing them at the end, and there weren't quite as many. We've been doing boot camps and remediation in high school since September, but I can get you a rough estimate.
Right, because where it says high school MP2, one F, two Fs, I, you know, I think you should do the same thing at the middle schools, for the number, for the middle school students, as indicates the total number of students, that's all.
Okay.
And, you know, it's easier to extrapolate and make sense out of the information.
Ms. Cook, you want to, if we're done with the questions for the presentation, you want the rest of your return-to-learn questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think, I'd like to ask these questions publicly because there are a lot of people who watch these meetings and look for answers, so that's why I'm asking them. But I do appreciate the focus of this presentation being on student achievement, because after all, that's what we're here to do. So that is absolutely appropriate, and I really appreciate the information and all that you're doing to help students in a very difficult time. So my first question has to do with something we've heard from several parents about a small group of students who will be impacted by the new high school schedule when people go back in person, and that's the group of kids who go down to the New Horizons Center. So I was just curious if anyone could address what, if anything, is happening, or if that was, if there was some sort of solution found to help those kids, a difficult situation.
Yes, we have several weeks, I believe it's like four weeks, that the students at New Horizons are going to be dismissed a little early to, actually, they're closing the course and letting them come home, come back to school home a little early in time to get to their third block class. We also are working with our students that are attending, for instance, New Horizons, that maybe their day was not alignment with our blue or green day. The high schools are working and calling each individual student to allow them to attend in-person with us on the same day so they can get on the bus and then go to New Horizons. And Dr. Maiene may be able to speak to that a little more, I know his counselors were calling individuals, but they're doing that across all three high schools. So we have made adjustments to the schedule, they've also done these adjustments for other school divisions too, and I think it's important to always remember that New Horizons is serving six school divisions who are on six different return-to-learn plans, and New Horizons has their plan too. So they are working with us, we're working with them, and the important thing is that we're, each principal and counselor and teachers are committed to supporting the students through the transition. But right now, we should be in a great place.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think you're highly customizing for each student, which-
Yes, ma'am, yeah, Dr. Worley hit the nail on the head. We are, we're addressing each situation as needed, for students that come on different days, we have spaces in the schools allocated for them to work so they can do their schoolwork as well. We know that the priority is for them to get that skill training, and we want to make sure that we are flexible, and we have had conversations even this morning about it in the sense that if it doesn't work the first week, we'll sit back and try to readjust with the families, but we're 100% flexible on that one, because we want to make sure we're supporting the students. We know it's an individual case-by-case situation.
My next question has to do with graduation. We've heard from a couple of parents who have inquired whether graduation, we know graduation plans are in flux, but the graduation date, could you comment on that and whether that's this?
So we actually are working through that right now as we speak, Ms. Boujoie and myself and one of the high school principals met with a group of seniors today to get their input on that. We are, we're quickly having to identify a couple of things inside versus outside, location and date, and we're looking at a window of time, and we hope to get that to you very soon.
So it's, so stay tuned for a final date? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, you know, I heard Mr. Kiefer earlier today speak about the importance of putting academics first, and I know Dr. Heron has said that many, many times, and I don't disagree with that. In fact, I think that's exactly what we've done. I think we focused with a laser on academics, and I could, you know, recite a laundry list of all the things that we've done to put that first. But I do think extracurricular activities are critically important, particularly at the high school level, and I think a year into this pandemic, it's time to really address those a little bit more. So I guess I have several questions around that. The first is sort of general extracurricular activities, band, clubs, so can you give us an update on what's happening around those? I know, we know a little bit more about athletics because we've gotten presentations, but if we can, I'd like to talk about athletics too, but could you just update us on what's going on with that?
So as far as activities and clubs and all of those things, the principals are working with teachers and club sponsors to transition to the degree that they can from virtual options to in-person learning. Again, we want to take careful, slow steps with this as we are with every other thing that we're doing carefully, focusing on being safe about it. I personally have met with band directors to talk about their plan of a safe way of rolling out opportunities for students to perform. We'll do the same with the other performing art groups, but our goal absolutely is to give students opportunities to reengage, reconnect, and, you know, be involved with the things that are near and dear to their heart, that connect them with school and that are important. So we are talking about that, and as we bring kids back to school in small groups, you'll see expansions of those opportunities that are not just virtual as we get them in school and do that with small steps.
We could, I guess, get more detail about that in a future update, that would be great. Also, just a remark about winter sports, I have a student who's a winter sport athlete and has been hearing from coaches multiple times a week, I just want to say that, just to answer some comments we heard earlier. And then can you, around fall sports, can you give us an update on what's going on with JV? I'd like some clarity around that, because I've- because I've been hearing different things about that. Are there tryouts? Are, is there JV training? Is there no JV sports? If you could just, for the public, help us understand-
Sure. So for the fall season, we are only having varsity competition with the VHSL. But all of our athletes, fall, winter, spring session, whether they're JV or varsity, we allow them to have opportunities to condition, to remain connected with their coach, very similar to what we did with the winter when we, we did not have the season. So moving forward, this season, we're, we're only competing at the varsity level. But the JV athletes will have opportunities, once all the teams are selected and we've started, started to play the ones that are not on the team, will have an opportunity to do conditioning, which will be separate from practice.
Will JV teams be fielded, but just not compete?
No. It's just conditioning. No, no practice, no teams, none of that.
Okay, so just weight training, jogging, you know, running, that kind of stuff, but no-
Conditioning, yeah. Conditioning is something that we've done even when we did not have, for example, when we didn't have the winter season. We, we had athletes conditioning before they moved into practice and tryouts. And so that's one way that we've allowed students to remain connected. And then we've done some of that stuff on Zoom when the numbers were high and we weren't doing, we were doing everything remotely. So our goal is to allow them opportunities to stay connected. But as far as the season, we were only competing at the varsity level.
Okay, so there will be no JV team, no practice?
Conditioning only.
So sticking on fall sports for now, spectators at sports, can, at matches, rather, for varsity fall?
Sure.
Can you speak to that? And, and let me just say that I, can you speak to that? Could you, thank you.
So we had a lot of thought, time and planning, obviously, that went into a careful way to roll out athletics. We, you know, it was heartbreaking for students not to be able to participate. So through our planning with our athletic directors, our principals, and some, some members of the leadership team, one of the decisions that we made to start the season would be not to have spectators. We do know that there are divisions that are in different places in our region about that, some having spectators, some not having spectators, some allowing two. So we decided, as a result of a decision that we made as a group, that we will start with no spectators. Guidelines from the VHSL and other, from, from our, from our state say suggests that if you do something indoor, you can only have 25 spectators, which would not even necessarily be enough to provide two per team. Outdoor events are a little different. But at the beginning, we are going to start with no spectators. But that does not mean we will not consider looking at that once we get going with our season.
Thank you. I really hope you reconsider that sooner rather than later. As someone who's participated in watching dozens of outdoor matches where two adults are allowed and, you know, there's ways to handle that, it's gone off without a hitch. And I really hope that that's something that you reconsider. I think, I think it's really important for the kids to have their parents out there. Also, can you talk a little bit about the masks? We heard a little bit about that tonight, actually competing with a mask on. And what you found, could you just share with us what you were thinking about that? And whether that's firm or something that you might consider changing as well?
We know that all of the research that we looked at, and, and what is safe and what keeps our students safe is obviously social distancing and wearing the mask are key mitigation factors. And with the athletic directors doing a lot of research, talking to other teams, talking to us, that was a decision we made as a, as a whole. It's really kind of hard to, it's easier to have everybody in mask and, and make sure everyone's okay and safe versus pick and choose who wears a mask and who doesn't wear a mask. The indoor sports were a big concern, and we wanted to make sure we had masks on for that. It was a collective decision that we believe is going to keep our students safe.
And do you know what other, what other nearby, I know it's happening in other states, but do you know what other nearby divisions or in the state?
I, I don't have data on all the divisions of masks, but I can get that for you.
Yeah, I'd appreciate knowing that, please. And then my last, I guess, comment has, well, question, comment about spring sports. Have, because that, that group of kids lost a season already. I hope that, that those students are able to play at the varsity and junior varsity level. Have you all given any thought to that? Or can you talk about what, what you're thinking, or whether, you know, we know VHSL has spoken at length and written at length about trying to preserve that season because of what happened last year? Are you in line with that? Or, or is, you know?
If I could interject just for a moment, obviously, we've just got new guidelines from the CDC. And we're actually awaiting the VHSL, looking at those, reviewing those, and seeing if they're going to make any changes based on those. But it's interesting, in high transmission red, which we are still in right now, it even says sports and extracurricular activities should be virtual only. So we really are walking a pathway, while continuing to look at the data. And even substantial orange, it says, sports and extracurricular activities occur only if they can be held outdoors with masks and physical distancing of six feet or more required. So I don't know what the VHSL is going to do in response to very specific guidelines about sports and extracurricular activities and whether that's going to impact some of the decisions already made. Thankfully, our data is moving down. And in the moderate level, things start to open out. And we, we're obviously more able to, to play and accommodate and have students playing sport, sports. But it's hard to look and say what's going to happen in a couple of months' time, maybe a month's time, when we're still awaiting new guidance, literally. As of Friday, everybody's responding to the new guidance from CDC. And obviously, we want to play, we want to be involved, we want to be safe, we want as many students involved as possible. Dr. Worley, I don't know if you want to-
I mean, we, we've had the same conversations, you know, in our heart, we want all students to have access to athletics, especially this spring, because we do know that they're the one group that missed their season last year. But we will keep safety as a, as a priority. But that is on our minds, that we've discussed that at, at every opportunity that we get for our high school and middle school.
Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Cook's questions reminded me of a conversation that students had at the Student Advisory Committee meeting last week with regard to earning letters. And I know questions were asked, and I don't know if you can speak to that tonight. But I know, like, for example, some swimming students, they're juniors this year, they didn't get to swim this year, but they have to swim four years in order to letter. So has there been some conversation about that?
I have data from two of the ADs. I'll have all of it tomorrow. But I, I think there's, I think you can earn a letter each year. So once I get that, I'll provide that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. I'm, I'm gonna piggyback on what Ms. Cook said about wanting to, I guess, get greater clarity on, I mean, I can understand this about the spectators. I can understand and have supported all this year, the, the emphasis on the safety of our students and our staff, you know, in the educational environment. I'm struggling to understand how, how other, our competitors, you know, in the VHSL, York County, or Pecosin, or whatever, are, are able to have, you know, their stadiums and allow people to, you know, however they manage it, two, two people per athlete in a, in a big stadium, and how I, how others, other divisions can do this. And it's, it ends up just, I, I'm really struggling. I'm really struggling understanding why, why we are, you know, throughout, I've always supported, I've always supported the cautious safety over, you know, like, I've always been there supporting the division with the decisions they're making. I'm having a really hard time, a really hard time understanding this, because as a lot of the callers said tonight, there, it's a big stadium. I'm sure our booster clubs could help organize, you know, I'm, I'm sure there are ways that we can do this that would be really, really safe for our, for our parents or guardians or whatever, to have a small number of people that could, that could participate in a way in that huge stadium to, I just think there's a way that we can do it. And I'm, I just am struggling to understand the rationale. And so I, I guess I'm really asking the division to maybe go, if possible, have, have your ADs relook at this and reevaluate, and just see if there's some, some way that we can work this out. That's all.
I will see, it's, I hear what you're saying, and it is a tough decision. Not every school division did allow spectators. Some that have had a season in are considering smaller numbers. And we still have larger divisions that are not allowing spectators. But to your, your point, if you do allow spectators, and if we decide to consider that, the who, there's, it's much bigger than just two parents. I think right now, in the guidance that we have, our athletes, our cheerleaders are considered spectators. There are other students that participate usually that are in the spectator number. And we're very limited in the number of spectators, even in a large stadium. So there's a lot, it's not just about two per athlete. But I do, I do hear, I know it's hard for families. And we are, we are listening, we're collecting data, we're collecting information. And we just want to do what we do well. We want to do it safely. And we want to, we want to have the opportunity to see what this looks like. And then, looking down the road, do this when we're ready to, if we are to consider spectators.
Just to ask that you, yeah-
Yes, ma'am.
Really look into it. Like, I, I look at the level of, of what you're, the links that you go through, which is wonderful for our students, the links that you go through. And I'm just asking to see if those links of, of investigating it can-
Mrs. Hummel, we certainly will do that. You know, we've, we listen to a lot of feedback every time we meet. And we get excellent feedback from all of you as board members as well, and great questions as well. And certainly, this will give us enough to go back and really look at everything very carefully and see what that would, would look like and, and if it's possible, and when would it be possible. And I know Dr. Worley will lead us, lead us in that and talk to ADs and principals and coaches as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to add, I appreciate the focus on academics and the, and the credit recovery and, and the performance of our students in the classroom. And I think that is critical, and that is, that is primary. And it's unfortunate that you, you, you work through that, you come through that, you, you have a, you deal with every kid and, and customizing for each student. And that, and that complicates us in open, opening up and complicates us in getting kids back in the classroom. And a lot of that, people just don't appreciate that, how many individual circumstances and situations that we have there. And so then, you know, as the administration, you come through that, and, and then suddenly somebody says, okay, we want you to go farther. We want you to start looking at extracurriculars. And so I can, I can understand from, from the administration's point of view, how that can seemingly never end. And, yeah, it's, I mean, it's just the way it is, right? I do, I do want to thank Dr. Miami for his comments on the efforts that the staff is doing. And, and I know that that is, that is not just at Lafayette, that is every school that we have. And our staff are going the extra mile and doing the extra things to support our families and support our students. And I want, I want to make sure that I recognize that and, and send my appreciation to all those staff members who are doing everything they can for our kids. There's a lot of, a lot of comments about, you know, virtual, and there is, there is teaching and learning going on. It doesn't work for everyone as well as it works for others. So there are some that it works better for, some that it doesn't work quite so well for. But there is teaching and learning going on. And, and I, I just want to think we should all recognize that, that there are, there's a lot of work being done out there. I would, since, since we've come through the academics, I'll, I'll, I'll pony on with what Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Hummel said. For those sports that are outdoors in the big stadium, it seems like we could, we could do something with spectators. And I, I think that's, that's kind of, kind of important. So I'm, I'm not gonna, I know that's been, been talked about. And so I'm not going to belabor that point too much. But I, I really do believe that we, we should be able to do something. And, you know, we, we heard it from the cross countries, just athletes tonight. And I feel like we can do something. I know that's maybe contrary to the strict interpretation of the CDC and where we, where we currently are with the state of Virginia. But it seems like, it seems like the, the risk, the added risk there is, is minimal. But something we should look at. And so, and so come March 1st, we have everybody K through 12 in school, hybrid. So then, as I, as we continue to push the line, we start going to, when do we start thinking about having kids going five days a week? I know that's gonna, that's a challenge with the, with the six-foot social distancing. But I would like to see us try to move towards, move closer to that as we get towards the end of the year and into the fourth quarter. Maybe what might be helpful is if we do go five days a week with the K through five, what challenges would we, what specific challenges would we have in meeting requirements? So, so if we have, you know, a full-up elementary school, we have challenges with social distancing in classrooms, and, and we can't meet the six-foot requirements. But it'd be kind of nice to just delineate what those challenges are. And as, as the numbers continue to decrease, the vaccination numbers go up, what are we willing to, what are we willing to do to, to try to get students more towards five days a week versus the, the two and, two and one? So I know I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I guess I'm kind of looking at what, what rules or guidance from the CDC would we have to violate in order to get that done, just to, just for us to understand that and for the public to understand that. And then, maybe we can have a discussion as to the quote unquote risks we're willing to accept or not willing to accept.
Sure. We can certainly do that based on the new guidance.
Because, you know, it's, and it's, it's all changing. You, you look at the numbers for, for VDH from, of people who are symptomatic, and that, and that number's coming straight down. And, and I'm, I'm hoping that continues. But I'm pretty sure it's going to come down to a level and flatten out. But I think it's, I think that would be a good discussion for us to have as far as what, what we're willing to, to look at.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from board members? I guess this is where I refer to my agenda. I would like to say to the staff that thank you very much for, for all of this. I know it's, it's a tremendous amount of effort. It's a tremendous amount of thought. And there are so many different variables and pieces to the equation. So I, I do want to thank all of you for, for your great work and for the people who are, who stand behind you to, that help you put all this together. So thank you much. 7.03, 2021, 2022, school calendar development. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kever, this evening is going to give us a very broad overview of some of the parameters around the development of a calendar for next school year. Mr. Kever?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening again, school board members. As we talk about the school calendar development for 2021, 2022, wanted to remind you of, of three things. First and foremost, we gathered some perspective from the school board in October when we presented some marking period one and marking period two modifications to you, and asked for some of your thoughts on development of the calendar. The WJCC Calendar Committee has met three times to this point, and the Regional Calendar Committee continues their work. However, that process has gone a little bit more slowly this year than in years past. And I think you'll find, a little bit later in the presentation, that the timeline that we're unveiling to bring forward a, a new calendar is a little bit later than, than we have been. And part of that is related to the regional tie-in. When the Calendar Committee first met, there were a series of key considerations that that group thought were important for development of the calendar. First and foremost, doing what is best for students and their achievement. There was some sense from the Calendar Committee that it would be, there'd be some potential for considering a pre-Labor Day start. There was interest in instructional continuity. By way of that, I'm talking about the potential for fewer early release days. Continued opportunity for teacher collaboration and PD, looking to leverage- Looking to leverage some of the virtual options that we've learned about this year in terms of the calendar and then avoiding the first day of school on Rosh Hashanah. Going to share with you this evening, two, two kind of overview drafts without putting full calendars in front of the board. We'll do that in the first meeting in March. But, but one of the, the drafts that we have talked about would include a pre Labor Day start. And here are a couple of the key dates that would be involved with that. Pre Labor Day start, we feel like would begin on Monday, August the 30th for students. That calendar would afford us an opportunity for three days at Thanksgiving, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So a three day Thanksgiving break. There would be the opportunity for a two week winter holiday, December 20th through the 31st. Spring break and that first full week in April, April 4th through the 8th. And then the last day of school with 180 instructional days would be Friday, June the 10th. One of the key pieces in this calendar and, and thinking about this particular concept would be that the, the school year would see the, the S O L testing calendar to more closely mirror the end of the year. Instead of multiple weeks at the end of S O L testing, it would be a shortened period of time. So the, the calendar would align better with the S O L testing window with fewer days at the, at the back end of the calendar that some folks feel like are, are less fruitful than others. That would be one potential concept. Another concept would be the post Labor Day calendar. And this particular set of dates takes into consideration the calendar committee's idea around not beginning school with the first day on Rosh Hashanah. I believe that was also a consideration that the board asked us to look at, which would mean that we would begin on Wednesday, September the 8th. Again, a three day Thanksgiving break. Two weeks, the winter holiday, spring vacation in the same timeframe, April 4th through the 8th, with the last day of school for students on Friday, June 17th. One of the pieces that we would bring forward for the board, it arose during calendar committee meetings and senior leadership meetings and meetings with principals were to, what were the lessons that we learned from school year 2021? We think we should consider virtual options for families or continue to consider virtual options for families when it comes to open houses and back to school nights. And the same thing for parent and family conferences. Not that virtual would be the only option, but that virtual would be an option to consider and put on the table that might afford more people an opportunity to participate and/or participate in different ways. Another piece of the puzzle that came forward from the calendar committee specifically was some of the strength that we'd realized this year around teacher collaboration and professional development. And, and looking at the multiple early release days that have typically been in our calendar, there is some sense that we would look to reduce those early release days and consider three virtual learning days spread across the school year. So for instance, in a typical W J C C calendar, like this year, COVID notwithstanding and/or the year before, COVID notwithstanding. There were nine elementary early release days. There were seven middle school early release days and 11 high school early release days. One of the things that we're talking about in the calendar development is, is to limit those down to the bare bones around elementary conferences and end of the year. And, and look at those three virtual learning days spread out. Perhaps one at the beginning part of October, another towards the end of January at about the semester turn or marking period two to marking period three. And then a third somewhere in the first week or so of March. What are the next steps? We would endeavor to bring back to you a calendar with specific dates and drafts on March the 2nd. We would give an opportunity for community feedback and then ask you to take action on the school year 21, 22 calendar on the 16th of March. What questions can we answer?
So, Ms. Hummel?
So I'm, as many of you know, would be an advocate for the pre Labor Day just because I've said that for the last three or four years. So in particular, if you're looking at remediation efforts or you're looking at what's the, what's putting our students, giving them the best foot forward with regard to standardized tests coming back, I'm assuming eventually there's going to be a return to the, even if not all the universities care about it anymore. But I would assume you've got your A P tests, you've got your, you know, A C T tests and things like that. And I know the A P test, it was a really big deal to give the students just a little extra time with that. So I guess that would be my, I love, by the way, I love the whole idea of getting rid of all of these little one-off, half early release days for the parents to know. It's just, it's hard for working parents to deal with all this. And I love the idea of the virtual, you know, the virtual conferences with the teachers. I, I think that's always been kind of three kids that I, that went through the school year. I was, I would go to those back to school nights and the conferences. And there would be maybe, you know, one, maybe five or six families there. When we were getting on to high school, it was less and less involved. I also thought there was a lot of awkwardness sometimes in those back to school nights where there would be a teacher talking to one, talking to one child or one parent about a child and other, other parents are listening to. It's always been, of course, my, the accolades of how wonderful the kids, you know, or whatever. And then your kid comes up, oh yes, I know who, you know, whatever. And it's just that awkwardness that comes sometimes from these back to school nights that I've always thought there was a better way to handle it. And I think the virtual, more personal approach is, is great. So I also think it would be nice that starting in a little earlier also aligns people with the start of universities. So a lot of universities are going back at the same, same general time. So it at least gives parents a more consistent, when they get to the point where they've got kids that are in college and kids that aren't, it gives them a more consistent start time for everyone. So those are my.
Ms. Ombi?
I concur with everything that Ms. Hummel just said.
Everything? Including the, the teachers busting on the kids about, aren't you somebody's brother? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I think the, the other thing to keep in mind here where, let me if I'm wrong with this, but part of the reason for the three virtual learning days spread across the year was there was a real commitment by the teachers that are on the committee and also talking to their colleagues, that those would be sort of a, sort of concentrated time for them to interact and work with each other as well. It wasn't just, you know, do conferences. But they looked at that as an opportunity for their own professional development. My?
I think, I think that's part of it, Dr. Beers. I think that, that, that we would want to, to create a structure for those three days that allowed for some, some definite teacher-student engagement at the beginning part of the day. And then allow for teachers to work together, to collaborate together in some part of the day as well. So we would want to put a structure towards it.
The, and I understand that, the, you know, it's not frustration, but half days are, you know, by the time you settle down are, are pretty short. And I think, and they were, they were thinking, this is a little more time where topics are due things where they've got some time.
Dr. Beers, are you amenable to the August start versus September 8?
Sorry?
Are you amenable to the August start versus September?
I don't know. I, my sense from the committee was most of them seemed to favor the August 30th.
Okay.
I don't have a, I'm trying to think of the right phrase. I'm a dog in this fight. Cause I, and I, cause so I really, um, I don't know what's going to create some, probably with parents. But I, you know, I think, I used to be the other way, but I really do think that sooner we can get them back in school.
Yeah.
You know, we can, I've really, I've really shifted my, it's not going to take away the Labor Day weekend. They're going to get Friday off. They're going to get the, but it's, it's, I think, somebody brought it up. Sean brought it up. Time setting things up and getting. I think that, that's what I like about that is.
Yeah. Ms.?
After Labor Day, you're, you really are set to go if you have. Yeah, I guess I'm kind of giving myself.
Ms. Cook?
I'm happy to entertain whichever recommendation comes. I, you know, benefits of both ways.
Ms. Cook not having an opinion. Mr. Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I remember this conversation when I first started with the board last year and this conversation about the King's Dominion law and not being able to really balance, I guess, the needs of different organizations and local entities, New Horizons, Governor's School, local tourism. Have those issues? I can understand how local tourism is kind of not a player at the moment. But the New Horizons, Governor's School, those things been resolved?
Those students, if, if we were to start before Labor Day, those, those students would start their New Horizons, Governor's School courses when those programs begin potentially the week after. And there might be the possibility at the end of the year, they would have to continue their studies in those programs for an additional week or so.
I feel like that was the, the explanation that we got last year. But on top of it was the other six school divisions that supported, were supported by New Horizons. Is that no longer a, a consideration or an issue?
Well, I think that the, part of the reason that the regional calendar committee has not finished work is I think that each of the divisions continues to talk about what works best for them and whether or not we can be individually all in on a regional calendar. And I think that, believe that at least one other neighboring division nearby is considering a pre Labor Day start. I'm, I'm not sure I should say it publicly. I just, I'm not sure. I've, I've read it somewhere, I think. But I think the other piece of that, Mr. Dow, is that looking at our students and what works, what works best for them, we would still help them stay attached to New Horizons and Governor's School. Just like Dr. Miani and Dr. Worley talked about, we would ensure they have every opportunity to continue their studies in those programs.
I appreciate that. And on the heels of what you just said, what is best for our students, I ask this next question. And so I'm curious, are, are we capped at 180 days of instruction? Can we go beyond that? Cause I'd like the August start period, perhaps they need more than that coming out of a, you know, I guess what we're about to see is hybrid at best, the school year, but virtual most of the time. These are just my thoughts. I'm wondering if we can get them in the classroom earlier and more often in that next school cycle.
Yeah, I think there's certainly funding for additional robust summer school. And when you start to add teaching days to the calendar, you add days to the teacher contract. And currently there are 180 days of direct instruction. Then there are 13 days in addition to that for professional learning and work days for students to prepare for getting back to school and grades and things like that. So that's a fairly significant cost involved for the school division to even add one day of contract onto a contract calendar. The only way you could hope to do it would be to take away some of the much value to teacher time to, for work days and for professional learning.
Now would be the time to talk about that if we want to attach ourselves to that potential next year though, within this budget cycle.
Yeah, I think one of the, the things that, that Mr. Keever's brought from the committee is by even pushing the start back a little bit earlier, we have more opportunity to do more of the instruction upfront by four days at least before you get to standardized testing. So we do gain a little bit and it'll be worth seeing how that works. But yes, it, it could be, it's not in the recommended budget. But there's always opportunities to consider.
Thank you. I think, I think one of the things that we have learned over the past year is flexibility. And so if New Horizons might be on a little bit different schedule, then we can be flexible with that. And have realized that that's not the end of the world. Conversely, you know, New Horizons has been in school for a couple of weeks now at, on some levels with the trades and some of the, of the special ed programs. And so, so, you know, our students are going there as well. And so there's, once again, that's flexibility, right? And I, I do appreciate some of the lessons learned. I think parent-teacher conferences going virtual is having, having, actually kind of encouraging that. I think that is a great thing because I think we get more participation from our parents and our teachers when they're virtual.
Do you want to say that we may not be 100% virtual, but that that would be certainly an option to consider? But there, there's some folks that it helps to have face to face. So.
Agreed.
Sir.
But, but I think we got, I think we get better participation this year when, with the virtual. I know, I know as part of New Horizons, the Family Counseling Center found that they had better attendance for their, for their, because they were virtual. That, you know, you're meeting the, you're actually, you're, you're literally meeting the parents and the families where they are. You know, they stay in their house and they're not, they don't have to venture forth into what could be an intimidating environment. And that's, I think that's, I think that's a great thing. And I also would be willing to, to look at an August start. I think that those days before Labor Day, I think are good. You know, they talk about the end of the year, the end of the year, or that it happens on the 17th to the 10th. You still have those potential lazy days before the end of the school. But I think, I think the August 30th start gets us away from Rosh Hashanah and helps us, helps take some pressure off of other parts of the calendar. So I think, I think the consensus of the board is we're certainly willing to consider that. I can speak as, for the consensus of the board.
Thank you.
You have any other questions for us, Mr. Keever?
Don't I have another opportunity to talk about calendar?
I know you do. Next, next time. Dr. Beers?
This, it's, it's. They also get, there's funds. Are they going to be doing, are they going to modify or? They normally run summer programs and are they going to, have they been doing that or?
Generally not, but I'd have to ask exactly what they're doing and provide that information for you. So if you have specific questions, Dr. Beers, if you send them to me, I can certainly send them to New Horizons.
Cause it is an organization and they, I'm, I'm, if, and I'm assuming if there was money available, they would have applied for it. I'm just curious about that more than anything. It's not, it's not a specific question.
So one of the reasons they brought, they brought the kids back in early part of February was because in order to get the, the hands-on time with their trades training, they had to be back in in February. So you can't do virtual welding and you couldn't do virtual H V A C. So they had to have those kids back in the labs. One of the things.
Wondering if they, if they're going to offer.
I don't think, I don't think they're talking about.
Some of that hands-on activity during the.
Well, I mean, there are programs that run the New Horizons through the summer, but I don't think they're going to do the Governor's School or some of the other, other things through the summer. One of the things they are looking at potentially doing is increasing the Governor's School participation and having the classroom part be virtual and the lab, and so that you'd only have to travel down there for the lab work. The, the students, particularly our students, really enjoyed the extra hours of sleep they got by not having to ride the bus. And they were, and they are the type of kids that can excel in the virtual environment. So there's, there's. So there's, there's a potential that you could, we could expand the Governor's School, uh, beyond what it's capped at now because we wouldn't have to transport people. So that's one of the things that, uh, you know, the Governor's School is looking at.
That's right, Jim, I forgot your, your very much.
That's great.
I try to know a little bit about it.
And I was just, uh, I'm, I'm curious if they, if money was available, if they did apply for it, if they got money or, or.
I, I think they got, I don't think they got a significant amount of CARES Act funding, but, um, they, they did, they did invest in air purifiers and some, and some things and all that. So it's, so, but I think there was some money there, but I'm not, I'm, I might be speaking a little bit out of turn there. Mr. Roberts will correct me tomorrow probably, but. So, um, moving on, eight point 01, uh, school year 2021 calendar revisions. Dr. Heron?
Keever is up again, uh, Mr. Chair, just to bring us minor revisions to this year's calendar. Mr. Keever.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. As the PowerPoint comes up, wanted to bring forward five particular items that we are recommending be removed from marking period three calendar. They, we, we believe they need to be removed based on our current operational, uh, status. It includes a back to school night on February 25th, and then the early release days on March 5th, March 18th, March 19th, and April 2. For, uh, yes, the, the 5th, the 19th, and the 2nd are Fridays, and, and currently students are not in person. Then on the 18th, we feel like, since that's a Thursday, we feel like, uh, because we are in the hybrid format at this point, that we should not do an early release day that day as well. These are similar to the modifications we brought to the board in October and asked for approval to remove from the calendar. The other piece that I want to mention is that, um, there remain some pieces in marking period four that we would want to come back to you on either March 2nd or March 16th to talk about potentially revising. And, um, there are some early release days there at the end of the school year. We need to add potentially a day or two for high school exams. I know that graduation has been talked about this evening, it's been asked about this evening. We would love to be able to share a date or dates for graduation and want to do that in short order. But we also want to ensure that we have, uh, information in terms of what is feasible and what is possible before we come out with a date and say it is, it is now, or it is then. Know that the uncertainty from last year is permeating with the class of 21 and those families. And, and we want to be able to ensure that we have some very definitive information. Ultimately, we're asking for those five items to be removed from marking period three. And we would come back to you looking at specifically at marking period four and what we consider to be the time after spring break, April 12th on.
Any comments from board members, questions? I think, I think we're, I think we're, we're fine with making those mods and we'll put that on the, and I think it's on the agenda for tonight. I would encourage you to come up with graduation plans as soon as possible.
And I, I, we, we totally agree, Mr. Kelly. And I think that one of those pieces that is a, is a challenge is that if, if we share a date or dates and there are, um, are requirements relative to numbers indoors or outdoors or requirements relative to number of guests that are available, that may be a scenario that we have to walk back. And we are attempting to give all of the information with dates as soon as we're able to do that.
Okay. I would just, I would just pin that tail on the calendar as quick as we could, just so that, uh, families can make plans. And then if, if the, the big ceremony has to change, then the big ceremony has to change. But, you know, families can still do what they think is appropriate to do with their, for their kids on graduation day. It's kind of important. Any comments from board members? Okay, moving eight point 02, approve the purchase of 10 school buses from Sunny Merriman, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Ewing is going to, uh, present this item today. You, I think you have a copy of the bus replacement plan in board docs for your reference as well.
This is not on the agenda for tonight.
Correct.
For action.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you know, in March of 2020, at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, all non-essential purchases were put on hold, which included bus replacements. And we did not request any, um, bus replacements in our year-end spending requests to the localities. Our bus replacement plan is a smoothing plan that suggests purchasing 10 buses per year. This agenda item for your consideration this evening is for the purchase of 10 school buses, which will be funded from savings in transportation salaries and benefits that have been realized this school year. I'm going to answer any questions.
Questions from board members. Ms. Hummel?
This is just probably not for, for you, Ms. Ewing, but it's just our, a general question about the future of school buses and green energy and electric buses and the direction that maybe the state and the country are headed. Are, are we maybe thinking about realigning our purchasing plans in light of the fact that we might have requirements by the federal government or state government for electric vehicles? And then we've got a whole pile of these ass.
Yeah, we.
Vehicles. I just was wondering if that's.
Obviously, we're, we're, we're not aware of any specific regulations yet, so there's nothing to comply with yet. Uh, as you know, we are expecting very soon the arrival of four, uh, electric buses. And we're going to monitor the use of those and the return on investment, uh, prior to purchasing more buses of that kind.
Any other questions from board members that remain? Yeah, the, um, I, I know that there's a lot of talk about electrical vehicles. Uh, there's a lot of inventory out there in non-electric vehicles. And, uh, the electric vehicles that, uh, that Dr. Heron was referencing were twice or three times the cost of where we are, so. Yeah. There's still some difficult decisions we made out there. But, uh, this, this helps us recover from our replacement strategy that we had, that we've pushed a pause button on, so. I think we're good. Uh, moving on, nine point 01, personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the personnel actions as approved, uh, excuse me, as, uh, presented, excuse me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Nby. Is there any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Dow?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. O'Nby?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Uh, takes us to nine point 02. Can I get a motion to approve the financial report, monthly bills and payroll for the month ended July 31st, 2021? Motion?
I move that we approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for the month ended January 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hummel? Aye.
Ms. O'Nby?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Uh, nine point 03, can I get a motion to approve the proposed third quarter revisions to the school year 2021 calendar?
Chair, I move that we approve the proposed third quarter revisions to the school year under as presented this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second?
Aye. Whoops, hello, second.
She didn't say here. Uh, thank you, Ms. O'Nby. Any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. O'Nby?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you very much. Uh, so that takes us, I'm, I'm not sure all the board members are aware, but before we move on to board member comments, I'd like to welcome Ms. Beth Alar over there in the corner. At our meeting next week, we will formally appoint her as the school board's new clerk. Uh, she has big shoes to fill with, uh, Ms. Serza and Ms. Robinson. Uh, the timing is impeccable. This is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and the role of the school board clerk is an essential component for the work of the school division. The clerk is responsible for keeping accurate records of the school board's meetings, spelling Cook with an N-E, um, proceedings and maintaining the connection between the school board and the public. As you know, our longtime clerk retired and Ms. Robinson, the senior administrative assistant to the superintendent, has been filling in for us until we hired a permanent replacement. And thanks for her service. And in celebration of School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, we would like to give Mrs. Robinson this small token of our appreciation. And so we also have, uh, flowers from Ms. Alar to say welcome and, uh, apologize for what we're going to do to you over the next year. So we, uh, hope, hope, we're, that, hope that helps to, uh, assuage anything that we do over the next year. But that will move into, uh, board member comments. Ms. Hummel?
Welcome and thank you, Ms. Robinson. You've been wonderful to work with and, um, doing those like other duties as assigned, right? That you probably had no idea you were going to be doing when you signed up to, uh, to work for Dr. Heron earlier. Anyway, so thank you, and, uh, just wanted to thank the, the speakers tonight. I know we're asking lots of questions and lo, posing lots of, um, hard questions. I appreciate all of the work that they are doing. I, I appreciate them trying to pull together the data that everyone, uh, is very anxious to, to hear about. And just a deep appreciation for the behind the scenes work that's going on all across the school division to help, um, our students succeed and help remediate the ones that are having problems. I also want to just put a big shout out for Friday and the fact that we've got a big group of our, uh, faculty and staff that are lined up to be, to receive their second vaccination, which is just really, really good news as we move forward, uh, to feeling that comfort level of having everyone back in the schools. So, that's it.
O'Nby?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to say thank you to Star. Um, it was seamless transition, filling in the, the shoes of our former, um, board clerk. And welcome to Ms. Alor. And what you don't know is that part of your job title is, is herding cats. Because that's what it's like. Working with all of us. So keeping all of our, all of us on, on, on point is, I think, sometimes challenging. And then wanted to thank Dr. Heron, uh, for your steadfast leadership as well as, as, um, all of the staff. Cause it's, um, it's not hard being a leader and you've had to make tough choices and choices that aren't always popular. And so I just, I thank you for, uh, continuing to follow the data. And, uh, follow all the sometimes ever-changing guidelines and information and suggestion from the federal, state, and local level. So, um, thank you for, for doing the right thing, um, and, and focusing on the safety of our, all of our employees and our students. And we are moving forward. We are following our plan. I was on the road this morning and saw several school buses. I was behind them and I was okay to be behind them. It was okay to be behind the school bus. And so I'm just, um, I know that, that the light is at the end of the tunnel. And so thank you for all that you've done. We are certainly still in uncharted territory and, um, there is no roadmap. We have kind of, um, made the path for us. And, um, the pandemic has not lent itself to something that we can, um, make a hard, fast decision necessarily because we have to continue to, to monitor the data. So, um, thanks for doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Yeah, I, um, very much appreciate the work of the superintendent, uh, half, uh, in, uh, in, in reading a, a budget that is, uh, that's really easy to support. It, um, touched on, on all the key areas, um, where we, where we need to, to, uh, to succeed. Thoughtfully, uh, put together, um, very much appreciate that. I, I also really, I really would like to give a shout out to our principals and assistant. Throughout the school, we know that we are always indebted to our, our incredible teachers and how much, um, time and effort that they make, um, helping our students. But, um, what, what is also just as important are those, uh, are those administrators, the principals, assistant principals, other support staff. They help to create the atmosphere, the environment, um, in those, uh, in the schools, among their staff. They get to know the students. They're very important. And, and, and just hearing some of the things that Lafayette has been doing, and I know other schools are doing it as well, really, um, really requires that, um, we, uh, really let them know that, uh, we very much appreciate the work that they, they do. They're not just the boss. They're not just, uh, somebody in charge of, of, of a building. Buildings alive and, and. They really make it so. And so I want them to recognize. I also, um, want to say that, um, sending, um, information, uh, data, academic data, I don't care what kind of data it is. It is complicated. It is time-consuming. And at times it can be overwhelming for, uh, not those that are creative, but those that, uh, that look at it. So if I sound, um, occasionally, um, I, I'm not trying to be tough, it's more a case of clarity. Um, it, it's really important, um, that we don't lose sight of, um, and, and the assessment stuff that the state has come up with. Sometimes I think, uh, helps us forget about the big pic. Big picture is, we want to, we want to turn out, uh, creative, inventive, uh, effective, literate, um, individuals who are capable of making real contributions when they, when they leave our school system. And, and it's, so it's important to not lose sight of, uh, some of those bigger things. And, and our high schools are certainly showing also, uh, little gruff anyway. I know that, but, um, it's too, uh, uh, it's to, it's to help, um, help the public better understand what all those numbers mean. What does it all mean? What is a blending subtest? What is a, you know, it's, it's just, uh, it is overwhelming. Of the mar, that what is, the marvel of all of that is, for the majority of children, it's, it's not overwhelming. They generally get it and go on and become successful, so. I just, I want, I, I felt the need to say that. I very much appreciate the work. I, but I also appreciate thorough, um, presentation of, of kind of information.
Yes, sometimes, Jim, your questions sound like that of a college professor from a school of education. Ms. Cook?
You're lucky I missed half of that.
It was all good. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, uh, Dr. Heron and Ms. Ewing for putting together the budget. I look forward to reading all 175 pages. Hopefully I will not ask 175 questions, um, although it's possible. Um, I, I also want to just thank everyone for their preparation. You know, this is a four-hour meeting. And for every hour that we meet, it's, it's gotta be at least 10 hours of preparation, if not more. So, um, recognize that and appreciate that. And, um, thank you, Ms. Robinson, for, uh, for pinch hitting and, and putting up with us, uh, in an interim fashion. And welcome, Ms. Alar. We can't wait to work with you. Um, I also wanted to shout out to the W, uh, Williamsburg Regional Library for their partnership to help gain, uh, get access to books for our students. That's huge. And I wanted to thank the city and the county for their work, uh, with us to get our staff vaccinated. That was a really big deal in a, in a tumultuous sort of unclear time. Um, and then also thanking our staff for their leadership, particularly our school nurses for being there and helping our community get vaccinated. It's a really.
It's a really big, so just, I think, is a testament to the fact that when this community needs to, Colony Williamsburg stepped up to the plate to provide the space and the localities and their emergency management teams and our nurses and our logisticians and we just, we did it. And so thank you and we'll continue to do it. On, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dowell?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I guess I would start by saying today was a really great day and I know that because my fifth grader told me so. He did. I came home and I got to see him before coming to this meeting and he was grinning ear to ear and I thought it was because he got his own bedroom for the first time today and that's not why. It was because he got to see his teachers and his classmates and wearing masks and social distancing and doing all those things are, are still necessary. He got to participate in the classroom and so I just, I think that for a lot of our K-5s today was just a blessing to them. I think that next year we get to extend that to another group and I said next year, next week, we get to extend that to another group and then by that first, I had to text my son, I said, you know what, Caleb, you're right. We're going back on the first, I thought it was the 22nd, so he's right, but he's ready. They're all itching. And I, Dr. Heron, want to say thank you to you for your leadership, for being steadfast and unwavering in the plan and in the, in the, the directions that the phases have had to move. I can't say that me personally, I've always liked it or even agreed with it. I might have gotten there quicker, but that's me and, but I trust you. I trust you and the staff and I want to say that publicly as well still. And as we get here, I think that it's still important to remember what we have learned from our health experts just a month and a half ago. I think it's been that schools, and it's so unfortunate that we didn't know this a year ago, we didn't have this available to us a year ago, but that schools can and do act as agents of control for the spread of the virus in a, in a community. And so as our numbers continue to come down to a, a level where we're comfortable, you know, it's just, it's really about our comfort in a lot of ways, I think that it's also important to remember that with our students in the classroom, we need to get ourselves to a point where we can keep them there. Looking towards potentially doing that five days a week rather than the, the hybrid two, which we're thrilled to have, you know, our kids are thrilled to have that at this point. I think about your leadership, Dr. Heron, and I know that it's emblematic in the things that we hear, like for, for example, from Dr. Miani today talking about Mr. Jefferson logging over 1,000 miles, which is just an incredible thing to consider on top of all the things that he's already expected to do day in and day out. His own family, his own responsibilities as a civic leader within the community, logging over 1,000 hours to reach out to students, find them, connect with them, let them know that they're cared for. And I think that's an example of your leadership. Would also add though that I think that there are moments, especially when we're challenged by a pandemic like this where it can appear that we're holding on too tight. I think that with this scenario with sports and those that get to participate in the stands, to me, it looks like we're holding on too tight to something that we can't fully control. I think that I would ask that we do, and I would lend my voice to my colleagues, that sooner than later, we really take another good, hard look at what Dr. Rowley said about starting with, starting, quote unquote, starting with no spectators. To me, that signals that there's plans, a thought process in place and perhaps we can really start to develop that so that at least parents can be in those stands and cheering on their students. I was down, walking along Target down near the Newtown area and they've got a karate dojo there and clearly the parents were not allowed in, they're watching through the big glass windows. That made sense, right? That made sense because of that small space stadium, you know, I, I have a hard time seeing the rationale there, though I understand in your meetings with senior staff, it most likely has made sense. I would just ask that we reconsider that for, for the sake of our students and those that love them the most. But I appreciate your leadership, I appreciate your staff, everyone that's here and that's worked so diligently for this community and this is, this is encouraging. We're moving forward. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you. I'm going to try to get through this without saying, without repeating a lot of things that my colleagues have said. 1,500 members of the staff vaccinated is huge, it's great, wonderful, almost 75%. I think everybody who wanted a vaccine has gotten at least the first one now and I think that's awesome. Look forward to circling that back up with their seconds. I would also like to say that because you've got a vaccine, doesn't give you a shirt with a big S on it, so wear your mask, stay your social distance, you know, keep up with those good practices that we've, we've had. Going off of what Mrs. OMB said about being behind the school bus, it's okay to be behind the school bus. I signed a contract last month, put cameras on school buses so that if people pass a school bus, they get a ticket. Don't pass a school bus when you're not supposed to pass a school bus, don't violate the stop sign. I'm, I'm not going to have any sympathy with people who get tickets for that because it's been, it's been a, a law since Henry Ford was a boy. I, I'd also like to thank Mrs. Robinson for tolerating me over the past month and a half and it's always been a joy to talk with, talk with her and I have appreciated her support and as, it was great, great working with her and will continue to work with her in her role. And Mrs. Alar, I look forward to the same thing and don't pay attention to what she said about me. I'd like to add my voice to the, thanks to the staff and to Dr. Heron for the good work and, and preparing for these meetings and for your leadership through this. I'd also like to give thanks to the board members, Mrs. Young and everybody included. You know, we came to the school board not because we want to keep kids out of school, we care about kids, we all support public education, we want students to learn in the best possible way, we want students to be safe. Pre-pandemic, we had a whole different connotation of what safety meant for our kids and now we have, we've added another line item to that thing and, you know, I appreciate the good work that this board has done and this board continues to do. We don't do this obviously for the money, we don't do this for any level of egotistical power, we do this because we care about kids and we do this because we want what's best for them. And I think we've tried to do that through all of this. We've made the best possible decisions that we, we could have and I just want to, I want to just acknowledge my appreciation to my colleagues for all of their good work, so. So thank you for that. Upcoming events, 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meets on March 10th at 3 o'clock and that's virtual school liaison committee meeting, 3/18, March 18th at 8 o'clock in the morning. Also virtual, and the policy committee meets March 18th as well at 8:30 and that's going to be virtual.
Mr. Chair? I had on my calendar that policy was meeting this Thursday on the 18th. Is that, has that changed?
February 18th at 8:30.
Okay, so we meet February 18th at 8:30 too.
Okay, thank you.
And then we meet again March 18th at 8:30. My apologies, thank you, thank you for that. As far as upcoming meetings of the entire school board, March 2nd, 6 o'clock here at room 300 in the annex, we have a closed session. On March 2nd at 6:30, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022, 2023 operating budget and that's immediately followed by a work session and action items at 6:30 here in the annex. We have a joint meeting on March 12th at 9 o'clock, which will be virtual with our funding partners from the city, city council and the Naperville County Board of Supervisors. And on March 16th, closed session here in the room 300 in the annex starts at 6 o'clock with a regular meeting at 6:30 on March 16th here in room 300. And that brings us to the end of a long day. Thank you, thank you folks for your work and your support and we are adjourned.